Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Buckman?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
Well.
Ms. Halsted?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have no one participating electronically. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Approved.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We made it.
Ms. Guy is bad influence.
Information items, let's jump right into 3.01, the adjustments to the staffing standards plan for FY24, FY28.
This is me, good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thanks for having us here, feels like it's been a minute. I did strive for this last board meeting of calendar 2023 to win a different award from Dr. Taylor this year. This summer, he gave me an award for the most interesting presentations. I decided to go for smallest font size in an attachment this year. I swear that the electronic versions, you can zoom in on, but I want to apologize for that ahead of time.
Does anybody need some glasses?
We have readers.
You're not helping out to put up though. Yeah. Okay, it's not helping, it's time for the cameras, zoom option.
In seriousness, I do know that there is a lot of heavy detail in some of the attachments. I hope that in the overview that I provide now, that it's going to give the big picture of where we are with staffing standard implementation, what we're looking at as we prepare for the FY25 budget season. The big headlines that we have is that, I think it was Dr. Taylor, the headline, if you can't tell the story of Stafford County without growth, and that is not looking any different for FY25. Certainly, you've heard from Mr. Fulmer over the last several months about the impact that has on building capacity, has a major impact on staffing needs as well. Just continuing the current staffing standards we have implemented, given projected student growth and also accounting for the student growth we've had mid-year this year, has a substantial fiscal impact. And given the forecast we received from the state, that means that we have to take into consideration what that means for the proposed implementation for staffing standards that we had originally shared last year. We had shared an implementation schedule that went out through FY28, and what we'll present tonight is a proposal to adjust that schedule to acknowledge those budget realities. And then also just wanted to give a little brief insight into, so what happens after the budget gets adopted to acknowledge the realities of school, just so the board has some information on that point. So we offer that for your information tonight, again, as we head into the budget season in the new calendar year. The quick note, strategic plan alignment, I don't think this is surprising, but highlight this effort to be good stewards of our public resources while providing the staffing that our schools need to provide, high-quality instruction to our students. So, the first note, our growth does come at a cost. I know that Mr. Fulmer and Dr. Taylor provided some information about this at the board retreat, but given the projected student enrollment growth for next year, and also acknowledging what was the actual makeup of the students who were in our buildings come September 30th this year, December 1st this year, what does that mean if we look at the implementation of our staffing standards for next year? And the number is not small, as you can see here. To actually follow the standards as adopted, the standards that were funded for implementation last year would be an increase of a decent number of FTEs. Some of that is purely due to anticipated new enrollment, some of it is to acknowledge that as we went into the school year this year, we allowed things to slide beyond what the board adopted standard was, to acknowledge the budget that had been adopted and the building capacity has existed. So what you see before you does take into account projected building capacity for next year.
Is there somewhere around here that I'm missing that says what the growth is?
Not on this slide, but there was a...
Well, you could just tell, I'm just trying to...
Sure. 619.
619.
Yeah. And so that's why I wanted to emphasize that it's both anticipated new enrollment and then the accounting for the enrollment we had this year in terms of the breakdown, particularly special.
619 was this year's and then next year's.
619 is projected for next year.
Okay.
619 is projected for next year, but then we also are accounting for changes that happen throughout the year, starting from the beginning of the year.
Correct.
But, Brett, this does not include the new schools coming in, that's not, we're not talking about that, the need for positions within those...
It's just kids.
Okay, within those hires.
Teachers, yeah, that's right.
Are these the estimated, like, cost, the budget going up? Like, is this how much we think budget will go?
That is, so this is the...
Just one part of it.
Yeah, the figure that's reflected there, the $9.2 million, is using the projected FY25 salary scales, that, again, part of the five-year budget plan that Mr. Fulmer and his team put together. So it's using those FY25 projected budgets for what the cost of those positions, what we would call fully loaded, which is not just the average salary for an employee, but a multiplier that takes account, account benefits as well.
So I look at these, I just want to make sure I, my understanding is right, are we saying that for, we get 600 students, we need four, we need one staff member for every four of those students?
So...
So, I mean, this is approximate, if I take 142 FTEs and I take 600 students and divide by 142, I'm going to get, not quite, but around four. So is that what, I mean, are we staffing at that level?
Not quite. So a good way to think about it is you've got 600 kids, roughly, and that equates to about 40 FTEs in general education, but some of those students are, also have different needs for learning, so some might be an English-as-a-second language student, some might be a special education student, and so depending on how we are accounting for them, they may be duplicate counted because they may be in an inclusive environment, and some may be in a more self-contained environment, and we have to kind of separate them out. One of the real challenges that comes with this is that they all don't show up in the same place at the same time. So if we had 600 kids that just showed up in one neighborhood and one environment, the division gets really easy, and the math gets really easy, you just divide the number of kids by the number of FTEs based on the ratio that were adopted. But they are showing up all across the county, and so they may be one or two kids in one particular grade level that pushes a grade level over that needs an extra FTE.
And then my other question is, are we actually able to acquire some of these teachers? So special education teachers, are we actually able to hire those teachers? The ESOL teachers, can we get them?
Or even the parents?
The school psychologists, can we get them?
So I would say it depends, and Mr. Burnett can absolutely correct me on this, but I will say that with specialized positions like the psychologists, it is going to be difficult to find them, incredibly difficult to find them. But with some of the general education and special education teachers, we had great success, we staffed up tremendously in special education this past year, 15%, which is pretty significant. We found teachers for those positions, and in the places where we were able to procure teachers early, because we posted the positions early and we interviewed early and selected early, we did really well. We did really well. And I think some of this is, to the extent that we forecast accurately, that we post early and that we solidify a selection early, might increase our probability for success.
Can we get information sent to us about how these projections came about? Because I'm with Dr. Chase, you know, and questions on some of this, and I'll just use the, just as a special ad. I mean, traditionally, that's, what, 11, 12, 13%? So 27 sounds like a lot of new teachers for that, so, but if, but if we can get that information, because this is a discussion I have had many times over the years with counterparts on the Board of Supervisors, and that's, don't you have room in some of your classes that if some of these kids come in, they wouldn't necessarily bump you to another class?
They might shift the class.
Some will, but some, there's going to be some leftovers. So if we could just get, you know, your formula or how you came about this, because it does seem like a very high number of new positions for a projection of 619, but if it's, you know, if we have that background, it'll help justify it when we have that question.
I was going to say, so I feel like I have a question, but I want to see if what is coming up maybe answers it, but can I just ask one question, or actually ask you for clarification? You said, when you were talking about the teachers, one general education teacher, one special education teacher, whatever, you said they might be in, did I hear you say multiple places?
Yeah.
So we're sending our special, it's one person to alternate, to different locations? Is that what, did I catch that correctly?
So, for example, you may have a student who is going to impact your special education staffing and your general education staffing because of the learning environment that their IEP dictates that they learn in. I'll give you an example. They may receive services in their general education environment through an inclusive practices teacher. So they may have a co-teacher in that classroom, they may have a teacher who pushes in for certain periods of the day, and that ratio might be a little bit less constricted like some of our more self-contained students. Well, our self-contained students, they're not going to be serviced by general education teachers for the most part, they're not going to factor largely into that general education number, they're going to factor exclusively into that special education number, and they're going to be staffed at a very generous ratio that's aligned to state guidelines that that's six to one. So you do have different things that are going to be driving different places, different, different numbers on this, based on that. So that's a good question to ask, it's the right question to ask, it's like, you know, we love an even split, something like 100 kids in a grade level per school, that's wonderful, because to us, that's like, oh, four sections of, you know, third grade or what have you. Well, what happens when you're at 120? Do you add that extra section? Probably. Probably. And maybe it's room-dependent, maybe it's not, but what happens when you have 125? Well, it's a no-brainer. Of course you're going to add the extra section. Well, are you adding it at 120 or are you adding it at 125? And what do your class sections look like in the meantime?
So you'll send us the formula, because I assume this is based on some formula.
That's right, and we'll send, but if I can offer one specific example, just to kind of highlight where this might come from, and it comes from work I was doing with the school this afternoon. It's a school that presently has four Level 2 special education classrooms, and that allocation made sense when we were looking at their projected enrollment, when we looked at updates even in July. As we have rolled in the school year, that school has found more students eligible for special education services, they've had students move into the enrollment zone that have added that. They are now at a point where if we were going strictly by the staffing standards, they would have six Level 2 special education teachers. So that's some of what you're seeing reflected in here.
So that was going to be my question. So some of this is reflective of the fact that not all of our staffing standards were implemented last year, especially as far as special ed, so we are in a deficit for special ed teachers.
That's right, as we got after the budget adoption, it was, we, like anyone with a budget, make do with what we have. So we had to be flexible. Also acknowledge that while Mr. White and his team are outstanding with our overall enrollment projections, projecting special education and English language learner populations is very challenging. We are continually working on new models to do so. We're going to get a little better each year with it as we have more data, but those populations also are the ones that are most likely to be mid-year transient in and out of the division, and also the most difficult to predict. You can't really look at a particular housing area and say, ah, yes, this is where the students and the families with special needs are committed.
So this brings up a really interesting point and something for the board to think about when we think about staffing in general. We typically staff based on what the projection is for September 30th, which makes perfect sense. And I will say, even with special education, with ESOL, hit it out of the park, we were staffed the way we were supposed to be staffed, with the right number of activities for September 30th. Well, it's not September 30th, we're pushing January now, and there's been student growth in both of those spaces. I think we're going to be in a pretty good place with special ed in terms of identification rates, we're nailing down pretty well. The one that probably has us maybe more concerned than anything else is maybe not special education, but getting a really good handle on ESOL, because that growth rate has amplified in the past couple of years in terms of the number of students and making sure that we're accurately trying to assess, when we project the number of ESOL students, whether or not we're projecting them at the right level of English proficiency, because based on their level of English proficiency, it's going to determine staffing.
What is their percentage of the population that is ESOL students, student population? Is it around 13 to 15%?
It's less than that, but it's been growing each year. I have to check the figure for you.
Yeah, your ESOL percentage has doubled in the last five years.
It's a triple question.
No, I think it's doubled in the, doubled since the pandemic, tripled in the last five years, that's correct.
Well, the real question is what level ESOL are at, because...
Correct, it's a big difference.
That makes a huge difference in the resources required.
Yeah.
And one other point, for growth, there's two things. The 619 is where we're at this September 30th, projected for next September 30th, but on September 30th of this year, we actually had 150 more kids than we had planned for. So there's 150 more kids for this year that were unexpected, and then we have another 619 on top of that, and that's all built into these numbers.
And the state will give you, or give us money for those additional students?
Their portion.
Their portion, right. I'm just saying, it's not, it's not all horrible news, but it's not great news either.
So the paraprofessionals for special ed are also a deficit from last year.
That is also, in the same vein, it's...
Proportional.
That's right. It's not exactly the same ratios you might see in the staffing standard for a couple of reasons. One is that the ratios are different based on Level 1, Level 2. The other is that one of the ways that we have accounted for that enrollment that goes past initial allocation is we make up with additional paraprofessional support as we can with the budget.
So we're talking about the deficit from last year, are these numbers, these 142 additional positions, is that strictly for the 619, or is that to make up what we weren't able to do last year?
Both, it is the combination of the two.
So when we get your formula, we'll see how much is what?
And so we included both of those within the growth model, because it is, because it ultimately comes down to...
It's not really, not if you're looking at the 619. I'm trying to understand it so I can defend it.
Yes, that's right. I guess, the better way to put it is, the figure you see here is, based on our overall projected enrollment for next school year, if we implemented the exact same standards that the board funded for this school year, this is what we would project.
Correct.
So we're not talking about a deficit then? If it's what we funded, that we're not dealing with the deficit?
I guess deficit might not be the language.
Yeah, you had additional kids show up that you didn't plan. So we're not moving from projection to projection, we're moving from actual to projection, and this is covering, so your budget is based on a projection, but you had actuals that were higher than your projection. So this is encompassing the actuals and the projection for next year.
Okay, that's what, if I see the formula, it will probably explain all this to me.
Yeah, and it actually may be helpful. Once we have it polished up, we'll share even the staffing sheet for you, just so you can see, compare last year's school to next year's school projection, just so that you can see, like, some of how the sausage is made.
I'm just trying to, to look at this, the 142 and the 9.2 million, how that, what that's based on, so that's...
Yes.
We can put all the other stuff in the footnote, but this is what I'm...
So unsolicited plug for your next presentation, using Click, Dr. Schutz looked up how many ESOL students you have in the division just now, and it's 14% of the division, and so that is a tool that you'll be able to use to discern that.
And do some of those 14% fit into the special education population?
Yes.
Well, identified.
Yes, some could be well identified.
So it's not, it's not 14% of this plus 14% of that?
Correct.
It's a combination.
And that actually accounts for a lot of the duplicate staffing, you know, one of the things that I really don't like about one of the state reports is it makes it look like we have a 10 to 1 ratio of adults to children, which is absolutely true, we do, but that kind of is a misrepresentation of what the class environment looks like, because that also counts maintenance personnel, it also double counts the fact that an ESOL student could be receiving special education services and general education services and ESOL services, so effectively you have three teachers of record tied to the kid, so...
So this is almost like we should have a meeting with the Board of Supervisors to discuss this, right?
It wouldn't be a bad idea.
A little too cheap, but it seems to me the urgency here is not being communicated appropriately, not from you guys.
I think we have a meeting this week.
No, we don't.
Yeah. So there's that, but that's, seeing this, that takes my frustration to a whole new level, but...
I'll slide to the next piece here, because I think this is also very important to point out. For the last several years, we've had the benefit of additional funding through federal grants in the COVID era, and unfortunately, the shot clock on those ends in September 30th of next year. Those funds have been used to pay for a number of positions, and as we go into next year, we have to make difficult choices as to what are we going to recommend moving to local funds, and what do we have to allow to lapse as we have to make that choice. So what's reflected here are the positions that, again, this is maintenance of what is currently budgeted, but what it would cost to move these positions from the grant funds to local funding. You'll note at the bottom that there are positions that are listed as, oh, these are the positions that we would recommend allowing to lapse, that does not actually save money to the division, because that's just grant funds that expire. So...
Are there no other grants for us to look at going forward? Do we, are we actively looking into that, education grants and stuff? And do those allow for staffing? Or do they just ease up the burden on something else? Does that make sense?
Yes, always, and, you know, Dr. Schutz's team takes a point in that, but all of our departments are always on the lookout for grants, private or public. It's the degree, the amount of money that we're talking about that was available through SRF funds compared to the normal cycle of grants is an order of magnitude.
Are there psychologists on our roles? Because we've always had to hire contract psychologists.
And we still need to hire contract psychologists, but this was, some of the FTEs are filled and some are not.
So are these all paras that, positions, but paras seems to be the biggest number that were added because of COVID and not just, hey, we have this money that's earmarked, so we're going to pay for, to free up general fund money? So these are specifically hired to use this, and on top of?
Those paraprofessional positions were added in addition to all locally funded staffing. There was a larger number in FY23, we cut it down, it was a first cut for FY24, and elementary principals were read into this planned scaling down. Phasing down, yeah.
Dr. Chase, how many times did you ask, what's going to happen when the grant funds run out?
Yep, this is what, this is what has to happen.
I mean, as long as I've been here, right?
No, and it is two years.
She's been doing this for... I was going to say.
And these are, these are eyes-wide-open decisions. I don't think that anybody has gone into this unadvisably, but it is, we're here now, and so, you know, we don't, we don't want to be, lack any transparency here, we're putting this out there for just this exact reason.
Yep.
So there aren't any surprises. It also makes me wonder, how many para positions do we have open at the end of each year, do we regular?
More than 34.
I was going to say, are we going to be able to afford?
Yes.
And that's what they told us when we had the first...
Silver lining, right?
And that was true last year, because, again, we went through this process last year with staffing standard adoption, where through both the staffing standards and the planned phase-out of these SRF positions, we knew that we would have substantial reductions, and everyone who was in good standing and wanted to stay with Stafford and was flexible on what and where still has a position here. So that, fully confident that will continue to be true. So the last piece, and I do want to flag that, and Ms. Hall, thank you very much for the updated printouts, that this slide was updated today, we noticed that there it was double counting, so this, the figure that's on this slide today is lower than the figure that was on this slide yesterday, so good news on that score. Based on what was presented in the two previous slides, as well as the overall budget forecast, we again took a look at the overall planned timeline for staffing standards and said, what can we reasonably propose to implement this year? This is where if you were to look at the attachments, if you wanted to go with the one with the slightly larger font than the other one, that breaks down by grade level and position, you can look now, but, yes, I'm merely letting you know it's there, you don't need to look at it right now, I'm sorry.
Okay, Chris, where's my notebook?
I broke the first rule of teaching of, don't give people a handout unless you want them to look at it right away. So what I'll point out here is that we did a, along with our school leadership team, our student services office, our academic programs office, a line-by-line review of the staffing standards to say, what can we get away with not doing in FY25, and what are the things that we must push forward with? And so that did mean we were able to find some things that we said we can wait another day on some of these, but there are the things that we still felt needed to push forward, and that's reflected in here and continued implementation, that's things that, for example, relate to adding some capacity for early childhood special education. It's adding some reading specialists at the elementary level to comply with Virginia Literacy Act. It is, again, psychologists and social workers that you see on here. But there are things that we did recommend deferring for another day. For example, with additional reading specialists, the board's adopted standards would have called for adding 11 across all of our elementary schools. We're proposing an approach that would only add 2.5. Additional encore resource teachers in elementary art, music, PE. The board's adopted standard, which was already not scheduled to go fully implemented until FY27, would add a substantial number of those teachers. We had hoped to go one other partial step this coming year to acknowledge the schools with very high enrollment, particularly in particular grade levels. We had to set that aside. 504 coordinators at middle schools, security officers, adding one at middle schools, that's the first school security officer for middle schools, and adding an additional at the high school level, changing the counselor ratio for high schools, the deans of students, our leadership pipeline, and we looked at all these and said, these have to live to fight another day.
Patrick, are we looking at 204 new FTEs is what we're talking about? 142 for growth and 62 to implement the staffing standards?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understood what's going on.
Yes, and that's why I needed to make the correction today, I needed to make sure that the three, the three added...
So I'm curious, if we're only adding two and a half reading specialists, I mean, is there a benefit, is there a point at which we can't add enough staff that it really, there's a benefit to the case, right?
That's a good question.
And I'm just wondering, with, you know, 17 elementary schools, two and a half reading specialists, or how are you, just, how are you targeting those?
Based on population size and your biggest elementary schools and making sure that there's adequate division of labor.
Every school has at least one now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, everyone has, if they can get them, it's not everybody has that endorsement.
And this is part of the challenge. And this is part of, of the challenge. Congratulations. Stafford is the fastest growing school division in the Commonwealth.
That's not mine.
You know, it's maybe the award we don't want to win.
We didn't put in for that.
But, but.
It's like getting a new title out of the pay raise.
Yeah.
Right, right.
And so unfortunately, with the growth, it's also exacerbating some other issues, which is that, you know, prior to the pandemic, Stafford was understaffed.
Right.
In some pretty critical areas.
But I think it's important to note that we are severely cheating our students out of the resources that they need. Reading specialists to me is not something that should go on the deferred list given the current situation that we're in with literacy. So to look at these numbers across the board, you're like, okay, well, that makes sense if I'm just looking to save money. But if I'm looking in that kid's eyes and telling him he still can't read in eighth grade, on an eighth grade level, because we couldn't pay reading specialists, that should be, I mean, I know it's a problem for the people in this room, in this room. But that is so discouraging to me, and, and I feel like it should be to everybody else. I feel like that, that the community should actually understand we're not, what we're, like, what this reading specialist actually means to our kids and to the end game for our kids. It's not just this number and us trying to cut dollars and cents out of it. We are literally cheating our kids, and that's super upsetting. And, and then not getting a meeting with the right people to present that to is also super upsetting. But that's just for this little guy here and the camera.
So this is a, just one element of a big preview kind of leading into the budget process. There, there isn't any action that needs to be taken, but rather the board to just consume this information. And Ms. Healy asked for a really critical piece of the puzzle that we'll, we'll also share and add to kind of show some context from one year to the next. And, and you can kind of see how some of the sausage is made in terms of how the formula applies to each school, each grade level, each classroom and whatnot. It'll be another fairly exhaustive spreadsheet, but it.
Take a print, please.
It may, maybe zoom, zoom in, but.
This is not, does me absolutely zero good.
No, it's good. You got the 2.0, you got the 2.0 glasses, then you got to put it close to your face. Listen, you take a picture on your phone and then you blow it up like this. That's how everybody does that. You got to look up.
What was the number?
Yes.
I did it on my computer.
That's what I did.
And then you scroll back and forth on your phone to see it.
If we had implemented.
That's how all the line people.
Uh, it would have been 11 additional reading specialists.
And we're going from 11 to 20 now.
Yeah, and, and so.
I just wanted to.
It's, it's a lot.
Write that down.
Because it's a lot.
Yeah.
You know, to staff our schools. You, you, you all are the board of directors of a $400 million organization that employs 4,300 employees. It's a lot, and there's a lot of nuance to this. So there's a lot of detail and there's lots of layers to the detail, but it's all important because it, it is how we deliver services to the kids and to the community. So there, there's a lot here, but, but ultimately it's going to be the number that is discretionarily decided by our counterparts across the street that will inform what we are able to provide in terms of services.
So one of the things that we did a couple of years ago when we were looking at staff that we needed and versus what we could get, in some, in some cases, we have taken psychologists and pushed forward social workers, right? And so my question is, is that when I'm looking at some of these, and you know, we've, we've discussed, okay, you have on here psychologists 18, and you're saying early enough, you know, we'll, we could potentially get it. But when I look at some of these other positions, like, like the reading specialists or even some of these where it was proposed five social workers and, oh, we're so, I'm sorry, I missed a column. But I'm just curious, is there any kind of thought to, if we're worried about not getting something, should we push forward something else?
Maybe, yeah. I think that that's an important consideration to, to think about. I, I think that that is a, is a great example as to whether or not you can procure social workers more, more readily than you can procure psychologists, and does that impact the board's decision making? And it might. And I think that as, as the board gets into its budget season, that's the kind of conversation that you're going to have to ultimately decide on, on, on where we land with our requests to the supervisors as a part of that.
So we can still say that I'd like to see this reading specialist number come up. Can we cut one or two from somewhere else? Is that, is that still open for psychologists?
There are like two reading specialists.
That's what I'm saying, so, so that.
Every training system.
Yeah, so I'm just, I just want to make sure that looking at this is our starting place, yeah.
But every cut or every addition requires a cut.
A cut, yeah.
Right. Which is an untenable situation.
Yeah.
Well, we're never going to have enough money, so we're always going to be triaging.
Right, and that's, you know, I, I moved the slide in the interest of time. I promised Dr. Schutz and Mr. Ecardi that I, I would leave them a speck of time. But the one acknowledgement is that post-budget adoption, we are very careful with when we make adjustments to that because once the budget is adopted, the board has adopted what its anticipated roster is for the year to come. So if we make changes, we better darn well have a good reason.
But we're not going to jail.
That's right.
Well, that's just it. We're going to kick the can down the road again because now we're going to have to redo our staffing standards. So what was going to be implemented in '26. Open three new schools and what happens then?
Twenty-six is going to be moved to twenty-six, twenty-six is going to be moved to twenty-seven.
And we've effectively planned for that. We kind of knew that that would happen.
Because they left your five open, pretty much.
Yeah.
So, so it, it is impactful, I think, to say that we have account, you, not me, definitely not taking any credit for that, but you have all accounted for so much of it. But then we've already seen what our accounting for actually leads us when it comes to planning across the street and what they, what they actually see, what we present, and what they see are very different. So I applaud all of you for this. This is beyond headache producing, but, but thank you for the hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, Click Data Analysis Training.
Hi, everyone. We are tremendously excited to show you our new Click dashboarding tool. Dr. Schutz, Mr. Ecardi, Director of Data Systems. So we're going to try to fly through the presentation so we can get you to the part that you want to see, where your hand's in the application and you're getting to see what our building leaders and executive leadership here at Central Office are currently using and as we roll it out to other staff members. So what is Click? It's our strategic dashboarding tool. It's really giving us an insight into multifaceted aspects of all that we're doing in all of our buildings. We currently have four visualizations, attendance, climate, discipline, and our membership report data. But we have a lot planned coming down the line specifically related to assessment, data, and some more.
Can I interrupt for just a quick second?
Yes, absolutely.
This was a request that the board had made several years ago to have a data visualization dashboard, and this is the demonstration for just that.
And is this going to be made available to the public?
We will be showing facets of this to the public.
Because that was the, the whole, the data dashboard would, it would be there for the public.
Yeah.
So do schools offer more transparency in almost every aspect of our operation than any other organization within the county? Which is.
Kind of cool, isn't it? Anyway, sorry to interrupt.
Yes, and, and we do have three, which we just accomplished. Number one, on our presentation overview, gave you a really quick encapsulation of what Click is capable of and what we're envisioning its utility in the school system. We're going to show you how to access and log you in, if you're not already logged in, to Google, and then how you can find it through the Waffle, just as our, our staff does. And then we'll have some real world scenarios where we can walk through how this can be applied.
It's a waffle.
It's, it's the Waffle system.
Looks like a waffle, right?
That's funny, I just learned ellipsis last year, so.
What all the kids call it, it's a waffle.
Okay. So I'm going to walk you through, Mr. Ecardi, you work in technology as the Director of Data Systems, and my team has been developing this this year. We just unveiled it to the principals in October. Assistant principals have had access to this, this week. And we provide, we're going to be providing more access as we develop this out. So it is, this, this dashboard allows for a lot of customization on the end by filtering out. Like one of your questions today was about your L students, and it's going to be easily to be able to digest and you can dig into it. But we are going to go ahead and get into Click right now. So our four applications that are in Click as of today, we have our attendance data, we have discipline data, school membership, which is our enrollment, and school climate surveys, which Dr. Schutz's team pushed out to all schools. Just currently, we added that in there for the schools.
And we'll be adding academic data.
And academic data is coming. And so inside of your attendance sheet, we're going to get in there now. Oh, and I'm going to go ahead and demonstrate on the board, but if you can walk along with me as well. So I'm going to jump out of this presentation now.
Would this be replacing student view when it comes to like looking at grades and everything?
That is a good question, though. It's not going to have student grades in here for the students to access or the parents to access. That's still going to always house an apparent view of student view. So I'm going to jump in just like you guys. I'm going to go.
Yeah, step by step.
Yeah, I'm going to go in, I'm now in Google, I'm signed in. There's my lovely picture here. I'm signed into my atStaffordSchools.net account. I am also onsite due to security right now. You need to be on our network to gain access to that. Our principals and assistant principals can gain access remotely using the VPN as well. So you just have to be on our secure network. So now that I'm in the Waffle, I'm going to scroll all the way down to the bottom. And under, right at the bottom, I'm going to have a little bit different apps because I'm in the developmental side too, but you're going to see this one that just says Click, not Click Test, but just Click.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Me neither.
I see more from the book.
Oh, I've just got, oh, there it is.
Click. You see yours?
I know.
Scroll.
Keep going all the way to the bottom.
You need to, you need to get out of this.
We may not have.
No, this is your waffle.
Oh, okay.
That's what the kids say is a waffle.
Are you signed into the Chromebook here? So go to your Gmail account.
It's right there. Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty savvy with the kids.
On Gmail?
Now, click on your waffle.
Why, just second. Not just, yeah.
And then go to your Waffle account.
Oh, over here.
Okay.
No wonder why I didn't see a picture.
So if you go to your Gmail and click your Waffle.
There it is.
There you go.
Yep.
So open up your Gmail.
Okay.
Okay, then go down. Yep.
There it is.
All right.
A big green Q, and it's very easy to find.
Yeah.
So here are nice four apps right here, and call this FourSquare. I like to somehow hit the double hamburger over here, which gives me a list view. And we're going to talk about this because inside of each app, it's a lot easier to read what the app is. So I call it my double cheeseburger or your FourSquare box, but you can do that way, just a good way to remember. So I'm going to open up the attendance app first, so SP attendance details. If I click right on the picture, it's going to open up for me.
Oof, I'm not getting any of this.
You don't have a double hamburger?
I've got Click, but it's just published now, so organized and.
Do you mind?
Yep, I'll take over. Sorry.
If you're on the same screen I am, can you give me a thumbs up so I can see? Okay, cool.
Look at those absences, 47,000.
So currently, right now, what you're looking at on this screen is all the absences as of today at 11:01 published today for this school year at a division level.
That's so pretty.
I mean, it's not pretty, but it's so pretty.
It would be a whole lot prettier if that 94.3 was a 95.1.
Even 58,000 are unexcused, that's pretty.
Yeah.
I feel like my kid is like 10% of these absences.
All three of mine, because I haven't turned in. It's really, like, parents are really slow to get their excuses in when it's excused.
It's not even that. You have to also give it to your teacher and the front office at some schools. I didn't know that, because I'd only been giving it to one. And so that's why my kid was.
All right.
Because they didn't know, they weren't communicating.
So just a brief overview of what, what we're looking at. On the top left is just our KPIs, right? Really quick numbers, but all of these buttons right here are filters. So you can filter by, let's go, we can filter by a school level. So if I click on the school level and I just want to see what our high school students are at right now, I can just click High School. Once I click that and I hit the checkbox, I lock that filter in. And as you can tell, the number is updated. Currently just showing that my current enrollment of high schools is 10,688. And up on the top, I just want to show you these tabs because if you get down the rabbit hole of clicking filters to get back to normal, you, you want to click out of your tabs. So I want to click the X, and now I clear everything back, and I'm back at the district level showing the 94.3%.
It's like shopping with filters.
So the information is real time data.
I can't, I can't go back.
Some of the value in this is that it gives our building level leaders, as well as our central office leadership, access to real time data. It's refreshed nightly, so when we're looking at our membership report that is current as of today, you can read at the top when it was refreshed most recently. So TJ, let's talk about some of the things that we can answer using this application. So here we are living in the attendance report. Let's investigate how many students were absent the two days before Thanksgiving across the division.
So two days before Thanksgiving, what I would like to do is there's a nice date filter here. If I hit down the dropdown for the date filter, every number that's dark is a school day, okay? As you can tell, September 25th, it's an eye test. This is like an eye test for everybody, up close, distancing. So I'm going to go to November, and I know that the two days in November were the 20th and 21st before Thanksgiving. I'm going to select them, and as I click both of them, I can look now across the division that our attendance rate for those two days was 88.1%. I can tell that, I can't see those numbers, but I'm just going to guess about 4,300 were unexcused. About 122 of those absences were suspensions, and that, I can't read that number, about 3,000 were excused, okay? So that's what, that's quickly, I can see what's going on.
And if we wanted to look at that particularly, let's say we wanted to see just our high school students.
So I keep that filter locked in, and I want to look just at high school, what would I do?
Go to school level and then high school.
Go to school level, and I just pick the high school, and then I lock that filter in by hitting the check. And now it stays there for me.
Wow. And how about if we wanted to see, so this is our current year, and we have two years worth of data. So let's see where, is, how does this year compare to last year's school year?
So I'm going to X out of my filters up top here, and that's a good question. So over here I have school year. This one with a trackpad might be a little hard for you guys, but if I click on school year right here, the little filter window, I can now change it to last school year, '22, '23, and unchecked this year. I lock in last year's school date. So now I need to go back and I need to pick that select date for November, right? November 22, 21, 22, lock it in, and it's 88.8% across the board, and this year was 88.1%. So we're staying currently about 88%. We do have less students last year than we do this year if you, if you looked at our enrollment numbers.
Okay, great. So let's move into our second.
Can you just explain, just really quick?
Of course.
So my truant students, that they go up and down and stuff like that, so just explain to me what the variable is on that that I'm looking at because that super fluctuates.
So truant is, I don't know, we don't know where they're at. So phone calls, no notes, and an unexcused absence could be like I went on a vacation, which is not an excused absence, it's considered unexcused. If I was truant, I don't know where you were. I have no note that you were gone. I don't know if you were on a vacation, if you were sick, if you were doctor's note.
It fluctuates so, so dramatically. Is that just because?
It's just.
Am I looking to, I guess I'm looking at it in proportion to the total number of students. So if I'm, if I'm separating out just high schools, then 7% of my high schoolers were truant. But is that, all right, nevermind, I'll formulate my thought, but it's just weird to watch it go so high up and down.
As you go down the filters.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, I'm wondering if you can explain chronically absent.
So chronically absent is, the measure is 10% out of your enrolled days of school. So we usually use the number of 18, right? Because we have 180 days. So we think 10% will be 18 days, and by the end of the year, you're considered chronically absent. However, what our calculation is doing now, it should start off high, and it should get lower as we go through the years because right now we might, what are we, almost enroll 90 days, right? We're almost enrolled 90 days. So at this point, if you have nine days or more, you're considered chronically absent in our eyes. And these numbers are our students as of their enrolled today, you know, not what we report to the state because the state has their, their methods that we sit down and report to them, and they run their calculations based on the enrollments as of this day, and those are our students. We, we care about every student that's in our building right now, and we want to work on those students, not just the ones that we report on the state.
Okay, let's transition since we, in the interest of time. Okay, let's transition since we, in the interest of time, so we can look at a second application of the four that we have currently available, discipline.
So I'm gonna go back to the ClickSense hub. I can get there by just hitting Click over here to the left, or I just close out my tabs on the top. So I'm just gonna close out the attendance. Now I'm back up to all my four apps here. And we're gonna go down to the discipline app. So as I click on the discipline app, it's gonna load. And then each app has different sheets, and I'll explain that. Like, as I open this up, inside of Click, we call the main application Discipline App. And then each one here in the sheets, remember, I like my double cheeseburger? And that's now I can read it across. I can see incident overview, I can see incident by month. But Dr. Schutz is gonna hit me up with a question right now.
I have several. So TJ, can we view the top 10 incidents reported in middle school?
Okay, so in middle school, we're gonna just start with the first sheet called Incident Overview. And you can always jump back to that, but over here on the right, just to show you guys real quick, I can jump from sheet to sheet by hitting this dropdown arrow and getting back to it as well, or I can just hit this arrow and just cycle through the sheets. Okay, you asked the question, what are the top 10 incidences? So right now, it's showing the top 10 incidences across the division, but you asked me middle school. We're really good at our filters. From middle school. I lock it in. Now, this graph is nice to see. I can, I can twist the graph around by clicking and dragging, whatever. However, I wanna show you another feature. If I click, or if I right-click on my screen, I can see where it says View Data. Now, when I click View Data, it's gonna break it down in easily readable format, so I can look across, what's my top incident up there? And it's a reading exam again. I didn't even get glasses checked.
Interfering with writing in the classroom.
Watch this, let's see if I can.
Ooh.
Nope, sorry, my bad.
Wait, how do we get it to be?
Okay, if you right-click the screen. Also, you have your little three dots over here. If I click More, I can click View Data there. There's also, if it's too small, you can see the other menu, I can make it fullscreen.
It's the same information, it's just a different visualization.
I was just showing that, you can break it down.
So that way, if someone is digesting information in graphic format, we have that if they prefer to see the counts. Something to point out, when we're looking at the data, it's always good to put it in context. So we provided in this the number of discrete incidents, and then we provided the number of students that those incidents represent. Both are probably important for us to note.
So if you see that KPI on the top, it's saying it's 160 students with 1,800 incidences, because a student can have more than one incident tied to it.
TJ, how about if we quickly switch over into suspension?
Okay. So I'm gonna do the quick way. I'm just gonna hit Sheets up top here, right up on the top. And I'm gonna scroll down until I see Suspensions Overview. We're gonna start right there.
See some similarities once we are able to click into what we were just looking at with incidents. This is specifically now looking at suspensions. And how about if we investigate how many suspensions that we have had this year for our ninth grade students?
For ninth grade students this year? So I'm just gonna click my grade level, and I'm going to, hold on one second, because I'm still in middle school. See, I forgot to clear up my filter. Everything's grayed out, I do it too. So I click back, now it looks, I got my enrollment numbers back up. It's like we planned on that. So go down to ninth grade. I lock it in. So now I'm showing my, out of the whole school year, this year, starting from school year, showing my students with suspensions. There's 154 unique students with suspensions. They've been suspended 240 times for a total of 160 days based on the suspensions. Each suspension type, if you really wanna dig in, it's a filter as well. So maybe I just wanna look at in-school suspension students. So I can click on in-school suspension students, I can lock that in, and you can see that we have 46 unique students with 61 ISSs.
And as we have in our other applications, we've got the ability to filter and specifically look into different demographic groups or different student reporting groups that we might wanna see.
I know, by school too.
And we have by school.
Oh, by school as well, yes. So we're trying to get all this out there for the principals and all the decision makers to be able to accurately do it. And like Dr. Taylor mentioned, we are adding academic information in. I'm working with Dr. Schutz's team to provide the SOLs, map data's going in there, and other aspects that tie into strategic plan and the school improvement plans as well.
I know we gave you a lot of information quickly.
Yes.
Just so that we can continue to move on. But it really is exciting. It gives us a really great tool that provides not just data at fingertip level access, but also some great data visualizations. For those of us like myself who like those data visualizations, it makes things easy to digest. We have that now provided too.
Okay, why do I have bar graphs instead of the?
We do have bar graphs.
I know, that's what I ended up with, but I'm not sure.
Because you clicked on it.
No, I did it on.
So as you go through, oh, real, I know.
I don't know how you got it. I don't know either.
So basically, one nice feature within Click is that it is customizable for the user. So if you are someone who prefers a pie chart, you can toggle it and make the information presented as a pie chart. If you like a bar graph, we've got...
If you don't like the colors, you can change the colors. And if you like Excel, you can just download it into a CSV file or make it an Excel, a very small, tiny...
Miss Guy.
Next month, when I forget, who do I call? No, go stop here. I am very nice on the phone. I am not a...
You can call Mr. Ucar.
I was gonna say, Dan Akkord.
Mrs. Holls could get in touch with me.
Because this is, this is a lot, and we do want you to, to be able to play with it and have a little bit of fun with it and learn a little bit about some things, because it should inform your decision-making. That's the, the whole idea is that, that data should inform some of your decision-making. So the idea here is that we are training all of our school leaders to be proficient in this space so that all of us, when you talk to us, should be able to help guide you through some of this and have at least a basic level of proficiency in helping you navigate the application. So it's not just TJ, it's not just, I mean, it's not just Thomas.
So I call all the principals.
That's the idea.
Did you say something about that you had to have a VPN network or something? So if I'm in my house, can I access this?
We'll make sure that you can.
To protect our student information, we try to keep it to the VPN if you're not on site.
I heard that, and I didn't hear like, but we will set you up. I didn't know, so...
We'll make sure that you have that. Maybe off of a school device, but, but we'll, we'll make sure that you have that access.
So that doesn't come just because we, because we sign in to go in, like, that's more docs. That's completely different than signing in for this.
Tomorrow, we might not be able to...
You could drive here.
Yeah.
Don't get crazy.
This guy is talking about picking up your phone and calling you, and what I'm saying is she won't be able to do that.
I have a VPN at home, though, because I do all sorts of things.
No, we'll, we'll get you set up quickly so that you can have access to it, because we, we, we're excited about...
Well, it saves them time, because we aren't pastoring them, because some of this data...
I mean, yes, I love that, so we don't have to...
But, but, but we want you to be really well-informed in the direction that you take it. And like, I will say, even just the last presentation of data with student discipline should be really telling. The last thing that we looked at was suspensions and just doing the basic math.
I don't know how I did it.
5% of our students are getting suspended. Not 25%, not 35%, 5%.
Can I call a friend?
But we're also at half the rate that we were at.
I changed the data format, I don't know what I did right now. So how do I get it?
Right, but what I'm saying is, so it's like two things, right?
It's not that I, I do like the bar graph, I just don't know how I got there.
I don't know what I did. We're taking it more seriously.
That's helpful, that's helpful to know, because that was even brought up in our legislative summit when they were asking about our kids too.
Yeah, I just, I, I think actually, I don't think I ever... Yeah, I've took my photograph.
No, you said paragraph.
No, I did.
You had a paragraph.
Okay, so the next item up on our agenda is our school board-owned property, Cliff Farms. And this came up because we've already discussed this in a work session. We discussed this at a retreat, and it came up from a board of supervisor member that they would like for us to discuss it in context with CIP conversation. And so, just so that we have it on the record for, not, I know this is not a, we don't vote on anything or anything like that, but what I would like to see is a consensus coming out of here on, I already know the answer, because we've already discussed it, but you could have changed your mind too. But a consensus of what we would like the board of supervisors to know about what we would like to do with our property, Cliff Farm. So we've discussed this at great length, so I'm just basically, we've been given a map, so everybody knows what we're talking about and where we are. And I just kinda would like to go around and say what it is that you would like to see happen with this property in our going-forward conversation with the supervisors. Dr. Warner?
Sure, start with me. I, I really don't know what we can do with Cliff Farms. I mean, it's, it's not really usable for a school. I don't think it's very effective as a use for parking and transportation services. So if they would just give us tons of money for it, and we could do, or trade it for something useful. So, I mean, I, I don't know. I really have no preferences as far as Cliff Farms.
Okay. Dr. Chase?
I thought in our meeting, we had discussed the possibility of public-private partnership to come up with workforce housing. And so I'm not sure that we have pursued that yet, because it seems like that would have been pretty... Amazing if Dr. Taylor had gotten that done already.
I have not pursued that in the last two weeks.
For me, the concern is always, you know, we've talked about land bank. It may not be usable for a school today, but it might be usable for a school in 20 years. I also feel like, you know, I, I return it to the board of supervisors, and they give it to some developer, and all of a sudden, I have, you know, 400 additional students. So my perspective is unless, you know, it, do they have an intended purpose for it? And if so, could they let us know what their intended purpose is? And I don't really understand the rush to discuss this, because we aren't having a CIP meeting anytime soon.
Well, this will get put on, I think, well, we were supposed to, but you're right.
I'm just saying.
Yep, yep.
No rush.
I absolutely agree. I think the land bank is smart. I think anything other than giving it away so that we get more students without the funding and the infrastructure fix. So I would personally never be for doing anything other than what we need for it, unless that came with a lot of concessions from the board of supervisors, which I don't think would exist. I do think that the idea of affordable homes for our staff is amazing, and I would love to look into that and would be 100% supportive of that personally.
Ms. Hollstead?
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm on board with these guys. I don't, I feel like at this point, sometimes I feel like we choose Stafford County like a monopoly board, right? And it's who gets that property first, and we're gonna buy it, and then we're gonna do whatever we want with it. And I feel like this, this property is unusable for us now. But if they wanted to use it for something, they would make it usable.
It's an urban services area.
Right, that's right. So, so for me, there's not necessarily an open motive here or transparent motive on their part why this property would be so enticing to them. For me, I don't need it to be enticing. It's just ours for now, and I feel like, given the push-pull and the, the things that we've recently come across, I'm not willing to, to vote on getting rid of the property until there's either millions behind it or, you know, some kind of transparency, which tells me what they intend to do with the property. Because again, it could, I would be almost 100% certain this would go to a developer for houses. And we would end up, again, drowning with houses and people we can't support.
Like, it's gonna go for housing, I'd rather go for housing for our people than...
Anybody else, correct.
But that still adds to our student population too.
It, it's still. It almost gets...
The ceiling?
Yeah.
I don't think we can put a restriction on housing. If it's housing, if it's workforce housing, it's whoever qualifies for it. Whether, you know, I don't think we can have a priority for, for schools. So overall, I think we do need it in the county. But that's a county issue, not a school board issue for me. I would not be inclined to consider surplusing it until we were sure that we were not gonna be able to use it for school purposes. Which, at this point, today, as has been mentioned, it's not feasible. But that's not to say at some point in the future, it, it may be. But I certainly would be open to considering a discussion of a memorandum of understanding, something like what we had with Moncur, where we, we needed land for, to rebuild Moncur. So we had a memorandum of understanding with the county, where they actually purchased the land. And the memorandum said at such point that the school was open, that we would move into the school, and we would surplus the old Moncur and give it to them, because we didn't need it. Not that that would be, you know, the, the same format here, but if they wanna make a proposal, I certainly would be willing to, you know, consider it. And when the land was purchased, it was always understood that we would never use all of it for school. When we bought it, we, we actually talked about public-private partnership and also partnering with the county to do something. At that point, there was discussion about parks and recs. But that's not to say we couldn't consider...
I was just gonna say, our gymnasium, our swim gymnasium.
When Mountain View was built, we actually surplus part of the Mountain View property, and there was a public partner, public-private partnership, say that quickly, that the county entered into, and that the people that built those, whatever, fixed income, you know, apartments at Mountain View, I think they rent it for like $100 a year. So that's, that's not out of the question if, if they wanna propose something. But, you know, I agree, we need to get something back from it, because it is county, the county's, county's schools asset.
Okay. Ms. Segman?
I feel really strongly about protecting this property. I know that we, for this board, because I wasn't part of the weave at time, spent considerable amount of money at the guidance of the supervisors. Money that I wish we had right now. But we ended up not using the property for what it's for. When I watch the board of supervisors' meetings, and I see what the plan is for the areas adjacent and surrounding this property, and the attempted rezoning going on, makes me even more serious about holding on to this property so that we can control its outcome. It would have to be a significant offer. I am not interested in trading it for, you know, the promise of schools that should have built a decade ago. That's not cool with me either. I think we need to get caught up and not have this be part of our negotiating strategy until we get to a point where we are actually talking about it being extra land. Because with the look of our CIP, we don't have extra land in this county. We have land that we just haven't used, decided the best place to use yet, and this is one of those pieces.
I'm also in agreement. I think that we should hold on to the property until, until. We just, I don't see that it would serve us to turn it over and say, well, we'll use it and, you know, give you money for part of, because we're not gonna get what we paid for. And I just don't feel like, at this moment, we have, we have the luxury of giving up property that we could potentially need, want, or use for a future school or whatever.
And how much, how much did we pay for it?
4.7 million, I think.
And it's valued now at about?
That was, that was 15...
2,006.
A long time ago.
More than 15 years ago.
And the original intent was potential High School 6. If I remember correctly. And, you know, it didn't work for High School 6. Maybe, you know, things will come back around, and it'll be great for High School 10. You know, we don't know. But there are not properties of this size available inside the urban services area in this county. And I don't wanna see it go for anything other than public service until we're sure we have our bases covered for future schools.
And I had just one more question. Understanding that there needs to be a lot of work done to the area, like, if we wanted to put a school there, but we might get to that point, correct? Where we, we look at it and say, well, we gotta spend 10 million to get the land right, but we have it.
If they develop the land around it, if they develop the land around it, then all of a sudden, it may not cost as much.
Okay.
I can remember that there was an issue with the airport flight. Is that not an issue anymore?
It's in the flip, it's in the flip, yeah.
It's actually, there's a small portion of the property that is in impact by the flight path, but that portion of the property is actually mostly unusable for RPA and topographic purposes. That's a little bit of a...
That's actually good news. That it makes it more potentially usable. Yeah. I was real excited about high school six going there when I went down there.
Point does resonate and should resonate that if there's development around that, they will expand the road infrastructure, they will expand the sewer infrastructure and water infrastructure, which may change with the dynamics of that property. And depending on what happens surrounding that property may influence the board's decision-making at a later date.
One thing I'll add is, you know, we spent a lot of time over the last six to eight months of the year looking at properties around the county. You all are right, there's not a whole lot of pieces left like this. And even the challenges with transportation and infrastructure getting it there are not much worse than anything we've seen anywhere else. So I think what staff has been talking about, what we really like to recommend is is doing a true study on this piece of land and trying to get down the brass tacks on what the usable use of this is.
And I'd be curious... Quite close to the subway, I mean, to the train station. It's, you know, it's a desirable...
Does anyone know what it is exactly that has been approved for going around this property right now?
That's 55 and older, high density, but 55 and older.
But that's what they proposed to go around it?
Yeah, that's the adjacent, because I remember, I was watching the meeting and I was like, I think that's our land. Wait a minute. And then I had to look it up on the parcel map and it's like across the street.
I'm just curious how many more people have to move in and how many more roofs we have to have before we finally acquiesce and bring commerce to this county. I'm just, it's so frustrating to me for decades. That I, I literally, I literally, I don't get it. I don't understand. I see this and then I looked at, oh, well, right, there's a Bucky's.
There's a Bucky's coming.
I mean, one more Wawa and I'm literally, my eye twitches when I drive by them. But anyway, my point is, I, I, I am beyond my point of frustration. Given that last month, I canceled my plans to take my son to Reno so that I could see there for someone on Saturday to discuss my issues. And then that was canceled. And now this time, like at some point, we got to get really, we have to be really honest about what has to happen to make this relationship work. Because I, I'm tired of trying to tell everybody, and clearly not you guys, that we're sinking. We are a sinking ship. And no one wants to hear it. It's easy to cancel a meeting, it's harder to come and attend it. But, but then we get down to stuff like this and I hear like, we don't have property. How many more schools do we have to build that we don't have property for? And no one over there is listening and we're, oh, we'll just rezon that one again, we'll just rezon it again. We just keep rezoning. Where are you putting these people and their kids? And don't justify it by an over 55 community because that does nothing for me.
Like, there's still kids.
Correct.
You can still have kids.
Correct. And it's infuriating.
And actually, an over 55, that's a certain...
Well, but all the other schools are on 55.
But they can't reside there.
But the other thing is, we're looking at, high school seven should go in the north.
They can't live there.
And, and I will just tell you, there's not a lot of usable land in the northern part of the county. It's, it's big.
Right. So what do you do?
Unless we put another river, maybe it can be a floating school.
We just have the environmental sciences land that's packed with... We will make it like a, like a, can I have a training facility or something like a paddle boat high school or something? It's frustrating and I really hope the community understands that.
Okay, thank you for your input and discussion on that. Are there any announcements?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's one announcement. When the board adjourns from your work session before your business session, we would like to invite you to a reception in honor of our student representative and our alternate student representative. And thanks for your year of service. We would like to honor you with a reception. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Is there any other announcements? Okay. This work session is over and we have time to, there's music and also reception for... This evening's music was in part to honor one of our former school board members who passed away, Mrs. Mancini. And we'll, her picture was showing out there. If you guys haven't, I don't know if you have had the honor of meeting her. She was really, really talented and cared dearly for music education for our Stafford County students. So moving on, can I go ahead and get a, well, I guess let's just do our color guard.
Harry, colors. Ready, march. Free, then, arms.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Arms. Ready, march. Right. Face. Port, arms. Forward, march.
I would like to thank the Brookpoint High School's Navy JROTC members tonight, of tonight's color guard. Was Gloria Tigner, Marissa Sempilo-Dyer. I can't read that. Oh, is it? Victoria Castro and Fiona Grimm. The instructors of the Brookpoint JROTC program are Major Mike Darnell, Master Sergeant Selwyn Reed, and First Sergeant Jason Polanco. Thank you all very much for participating with us tonight. Ms. Hall, can you call us to order, please? Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Buckman?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halsden?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
Ms. Solomon?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum. Thank you very much. We have no one participating electronically, so let's move to the approval of our agenda.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Second. Thank you. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Going on to our consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, please cast, oh, you do? Yes, ma'am?
I just had a quick question, probably from Mr. Towery, on the Rock Hill roof replacement. I just wanted to know if that, if we are able to complete what we expected using budgeted funds or if we've had to adjust our expectations based on cost.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. The roof projects have actually been coming in pretty, pretty well within budget, reasonable budget, so.
Great news, thank you.
All right, is there anything else? Okay, please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to our presentations. The first one up this evening is, is it chorus? Yes, thank you. Can we come down there?
Yeah. I was just going to say, Madam Chair, members of the board, if you'd like to take a seat in the first couple rows for the choral presentation.
Is, is Mr. Mancini here?
Actually, they're going to be lining up this way, maybe not.
No, we're staying, we're staying.
Sam.
They're going to sing this one.
Oh, can we get Mr. Mancini out here?
Yeah.
Can we move Mr. Mancini?
Yeah.
Excuse me, can we let Mr. Mancini come this side, please? Thank you.
We got a seat for you right up here, Mr. Mancini. Right up here, sir. We have a seat right here for you, sir.
Thank you for joining us this evening, Mr. Mancini.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stafford High School chamber singers, under the direction of Jo Evler, singing in her honor, Until Love Is Spoken and Carol Love the Bells. Mr. Mancini, I'd like to give you...
Oh, thank you so much.
Aww.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. Thank you all. Thank you all.
What did that look?
It was nice. It's very nice. Thank you again so much for coming out this evening. Really appreciate it. Staying in the musical theme, our next presentation is from Band Together to Fight Hunger. Ms. Healy and I very much enjoyed that event very much.
Good evening, Chair Randall, Vice Chair Healy, members of the board and Dr. Taylor. My name is Debbie Pickroll and, as you know, I was this year's coordinator for Band Together to Fight Hunger. On behalf of our five high school band parent associations, I am very proud to share the final contributions of our 13th annual event. I am joined this evening by our outstanding marching band leaders. Sam Chapman, drum major at Brookpoint High School. Ivana DeLong Cassis, drum major at Colonial Forge High School. Mitchell Austin, drum major at Mountain View High School. Rob Christiansen, drum major at North Stafford High School. Clara Jacob and Delaney Crisp, drum majors at Stafford High School. Also joining us this evening is Mr. Mayor and Ms. Holly King from the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank.
Hi, everyone, I'm Ivana DeLong Cassis. I am the current drum major at Colonial Forge High School. The 13th annual Band Together to Fight Hunger provided an exciting opportunity for our community to celebrate both our Stafford County high school marching bands and our commitment to the food insecure citizens right here in our surrounding communities. And due to the pandemic, many of our neighbors have still not recovered. These months have been defined by hardship and hunger. Rising food costs add to their burden, making it more difficult to afford the basics. But our Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank is a storehouse for our food and other products collected. These items are then distributed to our local food pantries and other programs in our communities. This is why our event is so important to the community.
Hello, I'm Sam Chapman, drum major at Brookpoint High School. This year's Band Together to Fight Hunger was once again a major success thanks to our incredible community and business partners. The program featured band performances from each high school and the grand finale consisting of nearly 400 Stafford County band students was the highlight of the evening. It was pretty awesome to connect, to get to conduct these musicians together.
I'm Delaney Crisp from Stafford High School. Because of our amazing community and business partners, we received donations totaling $18,425. That equates to $36,850 meals for our community through the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank. We are grateful for the support of our returning sponsors. Core Solutions, St. Peter's Lutheran Church Youth Group, KBI Music, Ebenezer United Methodist Church, Simventions, Stafford Printing, Carter Machinery, Manhattan Pizza, Boy Scout Troops 2220 and 26, and Chick-fil-A on 17. We would also like to thank and welcome our new sponsors. Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Psi Psi Omega Chapter, Special Forces Association, Chapter 90, Mathnasium, Joel Griffin, Howard and Tricia Rudat, University of Mary Washington Women's Softball Team, and Walmart Fresh.
Hello, my name is Mitchell Austin, drum major at Mountain View High School. Thank you to our Stafford community who attended in large numbers. With their help, we collected $8,631 during the event. This equates to an additional $17,261 meals for our community. During the course of the evening, with the help of our band booster families, we loaded $3,200... we loaded 3,210 pounds of food onto the food truck. This donation of nonperishable foods provided an additional 2,675 meals for the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank.
Hello, my name is Rob Christensen. I'm the drum major at North Stafford High School. The 13th Annual Band Together to Fight Hunger raised $27,055 in total. Coupled with the food donations, we are thrilled to share that our amazing community provided a total of 56,786 meals to the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank. We are proud to rep, we are proud to present the final check for the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank to Mr. Mayor and Ms. King.
Hello, I'm Clara Jacob, one of the drum majors at Stafford High School. Band Together started with a vision of one high school band director and has grown into an event where we are extremely proud of. Thanks to the support of our local community, our event has raised over 400,000 meals for the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank over the past 13 years. We are sure you will agree our band programs are making a huge impact in our community. Thank you for continuing to support and fund music programs in our high schools, and we look forward to seeing you next year.
Detail, present, arms. Detail, order, arms.
Can you come around? Can you come around and show the audience that, too?
So, Madam Chair, our representatives from the Food Bank are coming down right now.
Great. Yes, yes. Next up is our recognitions.
Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Taylor. This evening, we'll recognize students, staff, and community members that epitomize our values of students: integrity, respect, community, opportunity, and excellence. We begin by wishing fair winds and following seas to our inaugural student and alternate student representatives to the School Board: Ms. Katherine Buckman and Ms. Maraki Solomon. We'll now read a resolution in honor of their contributions to the Stafford Schools' learning community. A resolution to recognize the contributions of student representatives Katherine Buckman and Maraki Solomon to Stafford County Public Schools. Whereas Katherine Buckman and Maraki Solomon were appointed as the inaugural student representatives and alter student representatives to the School Board in January 2023, and whereas during their tenure, Ms. Buckman and Ms. Solomon provided invaluable insight and analysis using their experience as students in our school system to elevate student voice, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Stafford County expresses its profound gratitude to Katherine Buckman and Maraki Solomon for their dedication to Stafford County Public Schools, its students and staff, and the community at large, and name Ms. Buckman, Student Representative Emeritus, and Ms. Solomon, Alternate Student Representative Emeritus, through their high school commencement ceremonies in May 2024. The School Board wishes both young women well in their future endeavors, and further requires that this resolution of appreciation and support be duly recorded within the minutes of the Stafford County School Board, adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this 12th day of December 2023.
Our first student representative is here.
Ladies, thank you for sharing your enthusiasm, support, and advocacy with us. Your contributions will be long-lasting and contribute significantly to student wellness and voice for years to come.
We'd love for Maraki and Katherine's parents to please rise to be recognized at this time.
To your parents, thank you for sharing your students with us and for supporting them in achieving their goals. You have many reasons to truly be proud of these remarkable young women. We will now recognize our student musicians for excellence in their craft, beginning with the 2023 Virginia Band and Orchestra Director Association North Central Region Orchestra. These high school musicians earned a spot in the regional orchestra through a rigorous audition process that took place in late September. Many of these students will now go on to audition for the All-State Band and Orchestra in February 2024. Students, as I call your name, please come to the podium. Isabella Kang from Brookpoint High School; Aditya Bezos, Alex Martin, Philip Powellika, and Aiden Rong from Colonial Forge High School; Ian Archibald, Nathan Brown, Ruby Nudson, Lucas Kral, Colin Pinek, and Ning Haozhan from Mountain View High School; Zoe Lee and Elijah Ulay from Stafford High School; and our junior regional orchestra members: Calvin Eveler from Stafford High School and Patrick Wilt from T. Benton Gale Middle School. We're also proud to acknowledge and thank their teachers for supporting and encouraging their students: Axel Tyler Thompson, band director from Brookpoint High School; Debbie Tripp, orchestra director, Colonial Forge; Robert Galette, band director, Colonial Forge High School; Tom McDonald, orchestra from Mountain View; Austin Fairley, band director from Mountain View High School; Ron Baraklow, orchestra director, Stafford High School; and Austin Nicholas, band director, Stafford High School; David Anderson, orchestra director, T. Benton Gale Middle School. These high school musi- Ah, I apologize. Congratulations. Let us now recognize the students who earned a place in the 2023 Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association, All-Virginia Jazz Ensemble. These musicians also completed a rigorous audition process to earn a place in this ensemble. The group performed at the State Music Educators Conference this November. Colin Pinek from Mountain View High School and Samuel Fuller from Stafford High School. We're also proud to thank their band directors: Austin Fairley of Mountain View High School and Austin Nicholas from Stafford High School. We end our musical recognitions with the 2023 Virginia Music Educator Association Honors Choir. This honors ensemble is only for high school seniors. These four talented and hardworking singers auditioned amongst hundreds of high school seniors across the Commonwealth to earn one of only 132 spots in the choir. The event was held in Richmond at the State Music Educators Conference in November. From Colonial Forge: Luke Bachmann, Matthew Stoder, Kate Young, and from Stafford High School, Isabel Perrine. We send a special thank you to their chorus directors Barbara Perry at Colonial Forge and Joe Eveler from Stafford High School. To all of our student musicians, thank you for sharing your immense talent not only with Stafford schools but as representatives of our community at the state level. You serve as ambassadors and role models, and we are very proud of all of you. We wish you continued success in your future musical endeavors. We'll now recognize our state standouts in athletics. We begin with our incredible cheer team from Stafford High School. Our Class VI All-State Cheer Co-Player of the Year is Reese Barbie. We also congratulate Mackenzie Barham for her participation in the Class VI Second Team All-State Cheer Team. Not only were our students standouts, but we are also proud to congratulate their coach, Janet Barham, for her recognition as Class VI All-State Co-Coach of the Year. We'll now recognize our participants in Class VI's -- ladies, just stay up here with us. Class VI's all s- Class VI volleyball, both from Colonial Forge High School: Izzy Ostvik, Class VI First Team All-State Volleyball; and Claire Wortman, Class VI Second Team All-State Volleyball. Stafford Schools has an illustrious reputation for champion field hockey teams. We'll now recognize our participants in the Class VI All-State Field Hockey Team. From North Stafford High School, Savannah Lern; and from Stafford High School, Julia Etu, Haley Lemke, Madison Patton, and Malin Watson. We now recognize our participant in the Class VI All-State Golf Team, Matt Hartley of Colonial Forge High School. Congratulations, Matt. And finally, we recognize Kate Loscher of Colonial Forge High School. Kate was Class VI State Cross Country Runner-Up. To all of our student leaders, thank you for your service. Each of you has represented yourself and your school community with distinction, and we are proud to celebrate all of you.
We would also like to recognize Anne Marie Bellino for all her work. I know she, I think she stepped out. But she has done a tremendous amount of work in helping all of our musical performers in all of our high schools and in the Band Together Against Hunger. So I just would like to make sure we give her a little shout-out for all the, um, all the work she does behind the scenes. I think she just stepped out. Okay. Next up is our student representative report. So tonight, we're going to let Katherine and Maraki give their, um, their student rep reports tonight, both of them. Thank you.
Hello. It's so great to see everyone. So tonight is my last board report ever, which is really so, so crazy to say. It has been such an amazing year. So I would like to say a couple of words. But first, of course, I do need to give my quick couple of updates from the past month. So first of all, just this past month, I, along with our new representative, our new alternate representative, the board and the superintendent, all had the opportunity to travel to the Virginia School Board Conference. And I will say, it really was such a fun experience. So while there, I had the opportunity to network with student reps from across the state, which was really such an incredible experience. I learned a lot about the way other reps function in their counties, how they use their platform, all the different initiatives that they undertake, and all of the resources that they use. Overall, it was an incredibly informative experience. And during the conference, I not only got to know students from other counties, but I also had the opportunity to talk with our own new student rep and alternate student rep. Jolaine Jenny, I don't think you're here tonight, but I had so much fun at the conference. It was so great to get to know you, to hear about your ideas and your plans for the future. You're both so clearly passionate about what you're doing, and you care about the role and what it represents. And that's what's most important. We're all so excited to see what you accomplish in the future. So now, of course, as far as the mental health campaign. So this will be my last report covering my mental health campaign. So mental health is an issue that I'm hugely, hugely passionate about. And I'm so, so grateful, I can't even put into words how grateful I am, to have been given an opportunity to promote mental health awareness in Stafford. So this is my last report covering it. But I don't plan on abandoning the campaign. I will be continuing our current initiative, the Green Pin Project, to promote mental health awareness throughout Stafford. So right now, my good friend Ben and I are in the process of figuring out funding, which is always super fun. We're so grateful to the Mountain View PTO who has reached out and not only agreed to help fund 3,000 pins at Mountain View, but has also offered to work with us and other PTOs across the county to continue looking for funds for this project. So to the Mountain View PTO, thank you so much. It means so much to see people encouraging our project. We're so, so grateful to your support. So now, as promised, my farewell monologue. So when I first came to the position, I really did not know what was going on. And I've said this before. I felt nervous. I felt out of place. I was confused. So the first person that I would really like to thank is Maraki. Maraki, from day one, you have been nothing but smiles and encouragement. During my initial board reports, it was so nice just to have someone to smile at in the audience, someone to chat with between breaks. And now, a year later, we're good friends, and I'm so glad I had the opportunity to work closely with you this term. Thank you for all of your support and all of your help this year. It's been amazing, so amazing to work with you. So next, I really want to thank the board, of course. So I understand that I really owe the creation of my- So I understand that I really owe the creation of my position to you, and I'm so grateful to you for recognizing the importance of student voices and for taking the steps to incorporate it into Stafford County's decision-making process. It's been amazing to work with you as such a powerful group of women. And I probably haven't expressed it, but as a young girl, someone who's interested in a field like law or politics or something advocacy-based, it has been really inspiring to work with such a strong group of women like you. You've helped me shape an idea of who I want to be when I grow up. Thank you for your kindness as I adjusted to the position. Thank you for welcoming warmly. Thank you for listening, genuinely listening, when I spoke for everything that I had to say. I'm grateful, so grateful, for your support more than I can even say, and I will miss you all dearly. I want to thank Ms. Osborne. I want to thank Ms. Hall. I want to thank Ms. Mergo. I want to thank Dr. Shuts. I want to thank Ms. Sullivan, Dr. Stumpel, anyone else. I don't want to leave anyone out, but there's a lot of people. All you've done to support me, there's so many people, so many things that you all have done, I can't even put into words how grateful I am to you for your encouragement and your support and your guidance and your kindness throughout this whole process. And now, finally, I'd like to thank Dr. Taylor. And I would like to thank him for a multitude of things. I'd like to thank you for encouraging me to make the most of this opportunity, for making yourself available to talk with me when I had ideas or concerns or thoughts or plans. Having been representative for the past year, I can tell and I can say truly from my heart that this is not a decorative position at all. These people truly care. Every single time I spoke up, every single time, I genuinely felt like what I said mattered and what I wanted to accomplish or do was supported. You responded to me when I sent you a multi-thousand-word email on a Sunday afternoon. That's commitment. And you're willing to frequently meet with me when I had anything, anything I wanted to talk about, you were right there. I really feel like I was given an opportunity to make change, and I'm so grateful. I keep saying it, but I really am so, so grateful for everyone and for everything. Going into the position, I was nervous, and I didn't know what I was doing. But I think as the year progressed, I really have felt encouraged, and I do think I've grown confident and comfortable as a person. It's been amazing to have the opportunity to represent the voices of students across the county, and I really think it's a testament to how much you truly care about the wonderful student body of Stafford County. To our new representatives, good luck. It's so much fun. It's an incredible transformative experience, and it's an amazing opportunity to facilitate change in the community. We're also so excited to see what you accomplish in the next year. And I think with that, I will conclude my final board report. I've had such an amazing time serving as Stafford County's first student representative, and I'm so grateful to have been given this opportunity. Thank you all, really.
Thank you, Kathryn. Did not disappoint at all. Maraki, could you come up and do yours?
Of course. I don't know how I'm going to follow that up, but--
You just be you.
So hello and good evening, fellow board members and everybody here tonight. I don't think I can believe that it's been a full year since we were selected in this position, and I've gotten so much out of this. I've learned so much, and I'm truly grateful for each of the tidbits of information that you guys have given to me and all the things that I've learned just by being in a meeting with you guys and seeing the inner workings of our wonderful county. And I've -- you guys have really shown what it means to be leaders, and I've reached a whole new, like greater appreciation of what you guys do, and I want to say thank you first and foremost as a student. The second person I would like to say thank you to is Ms. Kathryn. She has been an amazing partner, and I remember the first time you gave a speech, you were nervous, I have no idea for what. As everyone can see, she's such an amazing public speaker, and you're going to do so well, and I can't wait to see all the amazing things that you do. I'm so proud of you. I would like to say thank you to Ms. Hall and Ms. Osborne. Both of you guys have been so, so sweet and so nice when it comes to organizing meetings. Whenever we had a question, we could just text you guys, and I don't know how, but you would answer within seconds. I would love to thank the board members. You guys are such an amazing group of people, of women, and you guys are always such an inspiration, and I love seeing you and the care that you have for this county and the students and how you really just want to make this place so much better. And it's so nice to see that and understand that there are people who really want to just pave it forward and make things better. I would like to thank Dr. Taylor. You are an amazing, phenomenal leader, and I'm just so excited. I'm so happy. I know that my own K-12 experience is coming to an end, but I'm so excited for my sisters and what they're going to experience as they grow. I can look back at my educational career with greater discernment and greater understanding because now I know the thought and the arguments and the -- and all the thoughts that go into each decision that makes up our county and our school systems and how everything really has -- there's a thought behind it. There's so many just discussion and care put behind everything. I'm beyond grateful to have been able to work with you guys with such spirited and driven people, and I hope that Kathryn and I have set a strong enough foundation for the next two leaders, Jolene and Jennifer. Jolene is one of my best friends. I love her so much, and I'm so proud of her. And I just -- I hope that we've done a good enough job and set a good enough foundation for them and for future student representatives. For that, I thank you again for this wonderful opportunity. I hope I can use the skills I've learned from you guys for my future endeavors in education and beyond, and thank you again.
You did a beautiful job, beautiful job. Thank you, both, both of you ladies, and I'm sure the board members will be gushing in their reports. But we're going to move on to our citizen comments. I think we have one. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. We have Ms. Clarissa Quinn signed up.
Is Clarissa here? No? Okay. All right. Moving on to action items. The first action item is the adoption of proposed new policy 3114 and Regulation 3114-R, Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are -- let's go through comments, questions, or concerns. Anybody want to?
I just have one. I mean, so for me, I'm still really struggling to approve or to say yes to this or be behind this because I'm just -- I know what we're trying to do with the guardrails, but I do not want this to be -- approval for this to be indicative of the fact that I support AI in our classrooms. I just feel like I keep reading more and more negative things about it. I know we've all talked about the horse is out of the barn, and I also feel like so instead of sending a cowboy to get the horse and bring it back, we're running out like rodeo clowns trying to catch the horse, and that freaks me out a little bit because the implications to it are so far-reaching. And again, I have no problem with AI. I do, but not in the hands of adults. You're adults, that's up to you. But for me and kids and the impact, I'm really reluctant to -- I don't want to say no to guidelines, but I just don't want to say yes to AI. So I feel like that needs to be said before I can vote one way or the other.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Warner?
I think that AI, like any other technology, we have to approach with caution, and I think setting the guardrails and setting guidelines is really important because it is being used. It's being used by our students, it's being used by our teachers. But I think there needs to be an academic justification for it, and I am happy with what we've written, but I realize that it's always going to be something that we're going to have to revisit and review.
Yes, very, very often. Is anyone else? Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sympathetic to Ms. Halsted's concerns as well. Many years ago, this board was considering bring-your-own-device, and I wrote emails to my board members encouraging them to vote against it, and unfortunately, it did not go down. But I do understand that having absolutely nothing in our policy is probably far more dangerous than putting something in. And so, you know, I'm sure that Dr. Taylor and the Technology Advisory Committee and teachers and parents will hopefully be paying attention to what's happening and letting us know what kinds of modifications we need to make to the policy as it moves forward. Policies aren't written in stone, and this one will have to be revisited. But I'm in support of having a policy. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Dr. Taylor, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am, other than to just say, to my knowledge, and I could be wrong with this, I think if you adopt this policy, you would be the first school division in the Commonwealth to do so, and if not the first, one of the first. This is a very smart and pragmatic approach to dealing with a very complex issue. You tasked your Technology Advisory Committee to address this issue, to bring forward some recommendations. They did. You took a hard look at those recommendations. You made great modifications that were really smart and pragmatic, and I just want to applaud the board for taking such an interest in this when it would be easy to kind of let the waves wash over us with this issue, but instead, you're not taking that approach. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Sure. All right. If everyone would cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven-zero. Moving on to--
Wanted it on the record, I don't support AI.
Eight-point-oh-two modification of the 2023-2024 school calendar to make March 5th a student holiday and a staff workday. Can I get a motion? Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any comments, questions, or concerns? Ms. Healy?
I just wanted to confirm my understanding from our earlier discussion that this staff workday for staff in the schools, they will have the option to work from home because on the calendar, the color coding says staff workday slash professional learning day. I just wanted to make it clear before we vote on it.
We will have some administrators engaged in professional development, like assistant principals and principals and whatnot, but the bulk of the staff will have a remote option. For those of you at home who are wondering what on earth is on March 5th, this is a primary election day in the Commonwealth, but we are certainly open to rebranding this as Kathryn and Maraki's holiday in their honor so that they could get some credit for their service.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments? Other comments? Oh, yes, Ms. Healy.
I just wanted to add a follow-up to Dr. Taylor's comment, that the Stafford County voter registrar asked us to make this a school, you know, non-school day because so many of our schools are used for polling places, and there was, you know, questions about coming into the school and out of the school and, you know, just general, and that's why it wasn't an air initiative.
That's correct, Ms. Healy and Madam Chair. So many of our school sites, not all of them, are used as polling locations, and this was a request from the county registrar.
Maraki?
Would this just be for the school year because it's a general election year?
Correct. Okay.
So I just also, again, it's a weird request for me just because I think it puts an unfair burden on our families to find childcare for another day. So I just, I would like to request that in the future, not you folks, because clearly I think you get it, but that people respect the fact that our fam -- some of our families can't afford to have all of these additional days off with the burden of childcare. So I think it's probably a reasonable request, but it creates a sort of a strange burden for some of our families out there for childcare.
Yes, Dr. Chase?
Yeah. Am I correct that it's not really a request?
Per the Code of Virginia, the registrar can actually close our schools to use them as polling locations if she so chooses. In this case, she is asking.
Got it.
Until she's not.
Until she's not.
That being said, election days don't necessarily sneak up on us, and therefore primary election days don't sneak up on us. I kind of feel like, I understand that, but when we know what elections are going to be on a particular ballot each year, we can--
We can plan ahead a little bit better in the future for this.
Yeah, like we know that in most cases, especially with national elections, there's going to be some sort of primary. And even if we put it on our calendar in a color other than white saying potential to be closed pending the need for a primary, I think families can -- would prefer to go into the year anticipating that they might have to take time off of work or find alternative arrangements, and it's much easier to be than, I'm coming into work after all, I don't need a sitter after all, my kids are going to school after all versus the other way around.
Absolutely, and we typically don't have to worry too much about primary elections because the state primary election is typically held in the summertime in June when we are already out of session, based on how your calendar has operated the past couple of years. So this is absolutely something we need to keep in mind in the future, four years from now.
Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes six-one. Ms. Halsted is a no. Okay. Next is the adoption of a resolution requesting appropriation of funds and approval of the purchase and installation of 26 elementary modular classrooms and eight modular classrooms at North Star Early Childhood Education Center for school year 24-25. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Comments, questions, or concerns? Dr. Warner?
So this is $4.6 million that we need to invest in modular units. When we were sitting at the work session parsing out what staffing positions we had to eliminate because we didn't have the money to pay for them. And the reality is that this is just a reflection of the fact that for a decade and a half, we have not built schools, and we are out of space. There is no room at the inn, and we cannot fix that quickly. Even with sites selected for two new elementary schools, we are looking at three years before we open the doors. So this $4.7 -- $4.6 million is essentially money that -- it's just money that we're throwing away because we have to have space for students, and it should have not happened. But I support it because we can't have them sitting in the front yard. It is pretty terrifying that there are eight -- we need eight classrooms for North Star. All of our early childhood spaces are pretty much full, so we are out of space there, too.
Can I just, I mean, just to echo that? I think super frustrating that we sit in a meeting and watch that we have to potentially cut reading specialists and access to professional services for our kids because we have to put the money into alternate classroom sites. And I find it exceptionally frustrating that we still can't get to the table to discuss the urgency of the situation, but yet we have to sit here and take taxpayer dollars and put them towards modular -- I mean, we're heading towards, let's face it, a trailer campus. At some point, we're going to have a campus of just trailers that our kids are going to go to school at, and I don't care if they're pretty and cute and lovely inside. This is a costly, I believe, this is a super costly, I don't want to say mistake, but the word escapes me, but I am super frustrated that at $4.5 million, we could have reading specialists, math specialists, psychologists, and we're just throwing it away to fit kids in classrooms because we don't have the foresight to plan appropriately for our families and their kids.
Ms. Sigmund?
Dr. Taylor, can you remind me how many trailers we currently have operational in the county for K-12 approximately?
Yeah.
So 34, and then we're adding, you know, I'm not discounting North Star, but another 26. That's 60 trailers. How many classrooms are in an elementary school approximately?
Typically, 48 full classrooms in elementary schools. So this would be equating--
This is one and a half--
Yes.
-- elementary schools that are going to be filled next year, and we only have two elementary schools opening the year after that. Elementary 18 and 19 are full. We are so far behind. And meanwhile, the board of supervisors are meeting right now, talking with our finance people rather than talking with us about our CIP needs. And they're not talking about it in a way that sounds like they want to help us. not talking about it in a way that sounds like they want to help us. So they yell at us about what we ask for in our budget, for the money we need for reading specialists, for trailers, for all the things our children need, people, places, and things, as I like to say. Then they underfund us, and then we have to take $5 million off the top to create the spaces that they are responsible for creating for us. And then we don't have enough money to do what we need, so then we ask for more money, and then we get, you know, our wrists slapped, and we get bad press, and we get accused of being money grabbers and, you know, essentially having slush funds and going on lavish vacations with our, you know, high-paying opportunities here. But this is the way the money is flowing, and it's frustrating because it, we've worked our butts off, these seven women up here, eight, nine, advocating for these two schools to be built so that our kids can be in them, and they're already going to be full. And we haven't even started talking about the schools we need after this. And then we're going to have to continue to fight because they just don't get it. They just don't get it, that these classrooms, 60 classrooms operating in 2024, to cover for schools that should have been open a decade ago, that are going to be full, overfull by the time 2026 gets here. And that's why we're going to be pushing hard for rebuilds of some of our additional structures, including North Star, Rising Star, so we can have more seats. Does everybody here know that if you live south of 610, even if you're living in, like, in my district, right under 610, your children go all the way down to Rising Star because we don't have space? Do you want your three-year-old to be on a bus all the way down to Gary Melchers for early childhood when there is this building right across the street in most cases? But we don't have the space. And unfortunately, we don't have a space a lot of places. So it's so, so important, and I hate, I hate voting for trailers, but I hate more having overcrowded classrooms and, you know, overpopulated schools. But that's not a problem. We can fix here alone. We need the help from across the street, and we need them to start to listen and understand and not think they already know the whats and whys of what's going on over here. Thank you.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah. So for me, it's always about choices, right? And so, you know, there's a choice of, do I allow elementary school students to be in crowded classrooms, or am I okay with the students at Drew not being able to take band because there's no room large enough for them to take band? And I look at four and a half million dollars for trailers versus trying to put that money towards something longer lasting. And so for me, given the situation at Drew, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Healy?
Dr. Taylor, could you address how we're going to use these trailers after we get our new schools? Because my understanding is, we're not just throwing it away, that they're going to be repurposed, and there will be a use in Stafford County schools. So if you could address that, you know, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Unfortunately, Stafford schools will have use of trailers for quite some time. Even your existing capital improvement plan, although it may appear to be aggressive by some people, is barely meeting the minimum expectations for housing the students that we serve safely. This group of students that's currently in elementary schools right now, when the two relief schools, elementary school 18 and 19, become operational, you will still have some parts of the county that will have use of elementary school trailers, but a large portion of those students will then start migrating to middle school. And we will need to start looking at how we are meeting the needs of our middle school population, and trailers will have to be relocated to middle school sites to accommodate for that. One of the challenges that the board has faced, and you very successfully had to negotiate this by redistricting boundaries, it's impossible to redistrict boundaries when all of your facilities become full. And you're kind of at that point right now with elementary school, and you will soon be at that point with middle school as this group of students ages into middle school. So I think you are looking at construction projects over the next decade that will fulfill the useful life of these trailers, even purchase new, you will fulfill the useful life of these trailers until they're, until the asset's no longer useful.
What is the useful life of these trailers?
It depends. If you take really good care of a portable modular classroom, I think it's what, 15 years tops? But, and right now, your CIP goes out that far, and you'll have need for that, for that long of a period of time. Realistically, if you're moving them a couple of times, like we're going to have to, you're looking at closer to a 10 or 12 year time horizon.
Dr. Taylor, I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that the next place for the trailers, if we have Drew come online when we need it to, that we would not have to then move trailers to the middle school because we would have a middle school with more seats that would allow us to redistribute our kids to not have to have trailers in middle schools. Is that true?
That will certainly help tremendously.
If Drew opens on time.
And that is the big if.
Our on time.
Our timeline.
Yes.
Or I should say, the board's adopted timeline per its adopted capital improvement plan, that would assuage a lot of this, and you would still, but you would still have an elementary need for elementary 20 when that comes online. And also, think about the concern being a little bit more geographically spread out
Right.
versus as concentrated as it is right now, you may have a little bit more of a geographic dispersion where you may have one or two trailers at various school sites versus in very highly concentrated areas like we do today.
And also, I think I remember Mr. Towery explaining that, that one of the potentials of the trailers, once 18 and 19 open, is they would serve at the high schools for some of their bigger CIP, or, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's a
But at the high schools.
And that is a very logical place for that as well, because as part of your capital improvement plan, you have some pretty major renovation projects
Right.
where we could take a wing of a building offline
Right.
and utilize these trailers as part of that solution set, almost dealing with it in pockets. So you would see that as well on a lot of our campuses, as well as we're dealing with some of the major maintenance issues.
And so while
Also pending funding.
Right. So as I understand, if we, if I were to, and I'm not suggesting, I'm just asking, if we were to say, well, what of this can we afford? It looks like we could afford 3,521, and the total elementary school trailers is 3,450. What we can afford, as it looks, is the 1.125 of the North Star trailer portion of the campus that they would have. And so we would be going across the street and asking them for 1.1 million dollars that they haven't planned for, and we don't have either.
Yes, Madam Chair. So this is the difficult pickle that we're in, is that you do, no matter what, we are going to have to go to the supervisors to ask for the appropriation.
Right.
The question is whether or not the appropriation is for money in addition to your capital reserve, and I'll let Mr. Fulmer opine on that a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's exactly right. We have about $3.5 million in our capital reserve fund that is from a few years of accruing. That's how we paid for the modular classrooms last year, was money that had accrued, especially during COVID, when we had some savings and it had piled up. So it's, now, we can't hold a reserve fund on the school board side. It has to go over across the street, and the county puts any of our kind of surplus from each year into that capital reserve fund and restrict it for school board projects, one-time projects. So this would meet the need of that. I do have to share, because I just came from the Board of Supervisors, where they did approve our one-time funding. So our one-time funding for the all-in tutoring and buses was approved. There was a lot of discussion about whether we could use some of that funding for, that we had identified for buses, and use it towards the million dollars in the modulators for North Star that goes over above and beyond our capital reserve fund. So I want to make sure that that's clear. That was a point of contention overall. They did approve the 70. They did add a whereas into their resolution that basically says that if we wanted to use it for trailers, we could, and that could be if something changes. I did let them know that I did not think that the state would approve the one-time funding to be used for modular trailers, because it doesn't really have a tie to the purpose of the one-time funding. So overall, they approved it, but I want to let you know, they definitely have concerns that we would be coming back across the street asking for additional funds beyond our capital reserve. They know that the school board has not voted on this item yet. I made that very, very clear, and that I couldn't speak to what was going to happen at tonight's meeting. So I wanted to just fill you in on that while I had the chance before you voted on this
Okay. How old are our trailers now? You say they can go, I know we did not purchase new. And are these coming, these 26 plus eight, are any of those new?
So, yeah, some of them are new, and some of them are refurbished, but we kind of handpick, and we make sure, we spot check and make sure that we're not getting a 30-year-old unit.
Sure.
I would say the useful life, kind of planned useful life, is that 10 to 15-year range, but school divisions go longer than that. But they do start to show their age
Yeah, I've seen some pretty ones. And what, if you say that one of the things that declines the age of the trailer is moving them, and so if we've got a refurbished that's been moved, if we've got to move it from an elementary school to a middle school, high school, whatever our next move is, okay, that adds some on there, too. But the other part that's going to add on to this is the expense of moving the trailer and then establishing the trailer with power and all the things that it needs to be a supported classroom. How much is just that? I mean, we see the price of the trailer, but how much is, how much is it to move and set up each of these trailers?
So it's going to vary depending on the type of the unit that we're moving, the type of the complex
Whether it's the four or the one.
Whether it's the four or the one, yeah, or, you know, Hartwood and what would go in at Falmouth at this new site is, or Falmouth would get one similar to Hartwood where it's the line of them. It's not the stacked, kind of like Rocky Run's current trailers. But so depending on the unit, so a lot of what that costs is, is not maybe the physical moving, but once you move it, you then have to set it up with all the ADA access, you have to maybe add fencing. So ballpark number is 150,000, does that sound? 200, 150 to 200,000, I mean, depending on four to six units and per unit of four to six. Four to six classrooms.
Well, okay.
Because there's concrete work, you have to lay new footers at the new sites. Now, you could, sorry, I don't want to
No, no.
If we did a bigger complex, like if we moved them all to one site to be kind of adjoined and used as a swing space, you're getting, you'll have a little bit more of efficiency there.
Savings, right.
There'll be a savings. It's not going to be 200,000 for every set of four classrooms you're adding.
Right. Okay. And, and just picking here, if we approved what we can afford, which is just the elementary schools, do, can we put off for one year the North Star trailers? Like, what will that hurt or not?
Yeah. So I can opine a little bit on that.
Yes, please, thank you.
So that would represent a pretty significant programmatic shift that we would have to kind of go into eyes wide open. The struggle here is what you can afford versus what you need to do and what is in our best interest to do. And certainly, the highest return on investment in public education is in early childhood. There's no question about it. However, it is not a required program, all of the services that we provide in early childhood. But it would require us to make a modification to readjust to our required programs and prioritize them versus the ones that are state incentive programs like VPI, VPI Plus. So it would require us to make some modifications programmatically to kind of create that mix that we are putting the service priority towards our required early childhood special education programs, and it would make an adjustment to some of our service that we're offering and reduce the amount of service that we're providing to the community because our community is growing and our early childhood needs are growing.
So what if we did it the other way? What if, in still trying to maintain ourselves in our affordability, that we left the North Star but somehow, and I know it's going to be tricky because some of what you've designed in the four and the two is based on each campus. So, but is there a realm of possibility in that? Because I know, like, I know, you know, like you were saying, some of the campuses, they're individual versus the quad, if you will. So I'm just curious if we can, I'm just trying to see if there's a way to get this to an affordability versus a 1.125 ask.
And you're doing it very pragmatically. I will say that with everything in the elementary space, this is really kind of the bare minimum. And even though we don't like making tough decisions with early childhood, it's almost like you kind of would have to hold your nose if that was your disposition, knowing that it's not what's best for the community, but it is what you can afford. You know, it's not an ideal situation, but obviously, we would make do with what the board directs us to do. But your elementary programs, you're there. You've got to provide the capacity at your elementary programs for sure, and they are your top priority.
Okay. And I, because I know also, in talking with Chris about this last week, and he shared in the Friday Bulletin as well, that, you know, by, if we don't do the North Star, we could end up losing funding, which would then put us towards the end of the line to ever regain that funding, and which could, in the long run, hurt us.
That's correct, and that's state incentive funds.
Once we right that ship, so.
Those are state incentive funds for early childhood programs. Yeah, there's a certain amount of slots allotted in the state budget that they subsidize, and it's almost like if you give those up, you then go to the back of the line.
And that applies to our federal Head Start funds, too?
Yes. Dr. Warner?
I just want to say that these are the choices that we're making, and this is why the advocacy from the public is so important, because we don't have the funds for all the modular units that we need. And if we don't do it, then there are consequences. So if we don't, we are completely full in early childhood special education. If we don't have, those are mandatory programs. So VPI, Head Start, those are not mandatory, but if we forfeit those seats, we lose that funding, and we may never recover it. So there's always these consequences and these choices that have to be made because we are, we're moving the deck chairs on the Titanic, is basically what we're doing. And, you know, I'm supporting this, and I'm absolutely hopeful that the supervisors will come up with the additional funds for the North Star Early Childhood Special Education classrooms. But I recognize that our primary goal is K-12.
And also, I will say, Ms. Halsted, but I will also mention, I'm trying to recall if I heard this all well and right, is that when we add the trailers to the North Star campus, they're not similar to the elementary in the fact that they will have restrooms, which then enables them to potentially stay on the campus longer, because we do have a North Star addition. This helps buys us time. Or are we also thinking that we're going to continue to add trailers to this campus?
Well, long-term, I can't speak to that. I mean, this is a growing population, so will we need additional seats there? Long-term, yes. I will say in the immediate, next few years, I wouldn't imagine that we're going to have to add additional seats at North Star. So adding them at North Star now, I mean, there's a projection that we'll need at least three more classrooms across our North Star, Rising Star across our North Star, Rising Star now. That was in your growth numbers that Mr. Burnett already presented. And so this buys us part of those classrooms, but it also helps shift our boundaries a little bit because our, our kids at Rising Star have some of our longest routes.
Right.
And as soon as North Star fills up, um, and we've actually this year added like a child in, in Wide Water that has to go to Rising Star, and so that's a, a long haul because North Star is already full.
Okay. Ms. Halsted, sorry.
That's okay. Um, so I, first, it, it's frustrating because I feel like by approving these, we're giving them sort of an easy out, right? Because it looks like, it appears that we've solved a sizable problem that we have, right? Cause now we have classrooms to put kids in, which is not an acceptable, um, reality that any of us should have. It's, it's a little bit of a delusion of smoke and mirrors for us. But, but just so I understand this, so if they only give us what we can afford, like we approved this whole thing today. We approved this 4.5 million dollars. They can still say yes to the three, four that we have, but no to the 1.1, correct? So then if that is their answer, in fact, we would have to readdress maybe the allocation of these or would none of this change? Would we still keep this the way it is or would we be looking at moving some over to the, the early childhood?
I think kind of echoing what Dr. Taylor said is I think it's kind of a, what we have for our elementary schools, is that bare minimum, the non-negotiable that we have to have for next year to populate effectively there? I think it would be looking at postponing and, and having to revisit the Rising Star. And it could have an impact on the programs on there, or we'll have to try to get more creative.
And if they just agreed to rebuild or build us our Rising Star and our, our early childhood, like the actual center itself, what, what does that lift off of this burden? Do you know what I'm saying?
You're still looking at a really strained North Star campus.
Okay.
And unfortunately, at the rate in which our student population is growing and geographically where they are located, it's a really tough question and that, and, and actually Ms. Sigmund brought this up earlier is how long do you want three and four-year-olds to be on a bus? And, and the situation right now is no matter what in the near future, to continue to have high-functioning early childhood programs, you either need to expand to a third location or you need to, um, or, or you need to expand the northern campus in a really meaningful way.
So my final thought on this is, and I, I hope for the public that's, that's listening and, and to Dr. Warner's point about advocacy for, I mean, this isn't for the board. We're, we're on your side. We're on the parent's side. We're on the community's side. Enough's enough. Like, our kids in Stafford County truly deserve for us to be able to find fully the needs. That includes reading specialists. That includes social workers. And I think at this point in the game for us to, I mean, I feel like we're living in 2023 on a 1985 budget and that, that should be very telling to not just the people that are here now, but the people considering moving to Stafford.
Thank you. Ms. Healy?
I just wanted to point out that when we purchased North Star, the plan was to immediately, like the next year or two, to build an addition. And that addition was going to have, I think, 10 classrooms. And, and then we said, and then perhaps later build another 10. But we knew when we bought North Star and opened it, that we were going to be full right away. Now, just like everything on our CIP, that slipped. So this should not be any surprise to anyone that we need this space. But I would suggest that we consider, uh, asking for the capital reserve fund in the amount of the, um, elementary school modulars and asking for the board to, in addition, appropriate, and this will be from the county funds, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
To appropriate the money that we need for North Star. Because I don't want to have the trailers for the elementary school get held up because of a debate about whether there's funds available or, or, you know, what, you know, supervisors may or may not decide to do with North Star. I think we need to advocate for it. I think every one of our elementary school teachers would be right behind us because all I've ever heard from the elementary school, uh, teachers and administrators is how valuable this program is. That the students that come out of Head Start are performing, you know, well beyond, um, you know, what even, or at least keeping up with the other students, if not exceeding them. So the, the, the teachers see the benefit of the Head Start program. The families have the benefit. I think we need to advocate for it, but I don't want to lose the, the timing of getting the other one approved. And I, I think they would be hard-pressed to deny our request for allocation of our capital reserve because it is our reserve and, um, you know, we have to make those decisions. They have to allocate it. But if, if, if they want to say no, then I, then I think we've got a very strong argument on, on why we should go. But if we throw in this extra 25%, you know, the 1.125 million, then I think that they're in a very, um, fair position to say, no, we're not going to do that because we don't know where the money's coming from. I'm not trying to, you know, put an argument there, but I could foresee that argument. So I would suggest we consider, um, having our, our motion state that we, um, ask for the allocation of the, um, the capital reserve in the amount of the 3.45 million dollars for these particular modulars for the elementary school. And in addition, ask the county to allocate from, you know, county funding, wherever, you know, they want to consider bringing it. I'm sure they have a pretty healthy, they have a pretty healthy reserve, this money. And, and I would also like to, to include with that, you know, a very strong support for the North Star, the whole, you know, early childhood education, the benefits it has for, you know, the students, the families, and for the community. So just to, to really make our case there. And then when this goes over, um, you know, I would even think that, and I appreciate you, Mr. Fulmer, you, you do a lot with the board, but I would suggest that, that our chair go over and, and, and make this request as well. Because it is, it's really important and I, and I do think that there are members of the board of supervisors who would be, um, sympathetic to this particular need.
So I, I think that's a great idea. And the impression I got from the board of supervisors I was over there is they don't have any issue with appropriating our capital reserve funds for modulars. It was just when we exceeded that amount, so that was where a little bit of their heartburn came from. So I, I think that would be a, a great way to approach it, Ms. Healy.
Just to keep us on time, you know, especially, just especially to keep our elementary school trailer movement on time.
Yes, that's a great point as well.
So that would require a, um, either an, a, an, a friendly amendment to the, um, motion or a substitute motion.
Did I make the motion to approve on this one? I can't remember.
I don't know. I think I might, I might have done it.
It was so long ago.
It's so long, we have no idea. I'm going to make a, I would like to make a friendly amendment. I think that Ms. Halsted made the most and actually and I, I could, I think you did.
Okay.
You want me to make a substitute one?
Can we get a, all right.
That may, right, because we started to speak at the same time and then we separated out. Do I have to make the friendly amendment there?
Uh, Ms. Guy, we'd like to.
Well, somebody write down what I'm supposed to say.
I, I just want to, um, reiterate what the brilliant women up here have said because this is like not good, right? And we're putting, we're voting to get a school, an elementary school and a half of trailers. And, you know, Alyssa and I joked that we would get some friends and we would go picket at the model homes, maybe some PTO members or whatever, and just picket that Stafford is full. Now, it's a joke.
Ms. Osborne said no.
It's a joke, but, um, but the, the bottom line is we, we are full and I think it's, I, I really just hope that parents can hear loud and clear that we're full and we need their advocacy to get these schools built on time. And we need maybe for them to give the board of supervisors ideas on different streams of income for the county so that we can afford this and that we're not pitting, um, it's, it's like we're fighting for our children, but we're fighting against law enforcement who we don't want to fight against. And we're fighting against the first responders who, obviously they need their training and their equipment and, or we're fighting against ourselves. Like we can have children be comfortable in an environment that's conducive to learning, or we can actually hire people to actually teach them. It, it's, it's a no-win situation for us right now. I have no idea what our legacy is going to end up being if the parents don't really come to our aid and help us advocate and, and change everything.
Thank you. Okay, so what we're looking for then now is a friendly amendment? Is that correct? Okay. We, they have to get your approval since you were the motion maker.
That I can do.
Okay, hang on, let's hear it.
I'll, I'll make a friendly amendment then, if that's okay? I would like to amend the appropriations request so that we emphasize that the elementary school trailers are from the reserve fund. And we would like the county to additionally appropriate the 1.125 million for the additional seeds at, at, at Ri, at North Star. In addition, that this, these modulars are needed because the construction anticipated after North Star was purchased was never completed.
Second. No?
No. Can I get a second for, or do I need a second? Oh, you made the second. She made the second. They switched, okay. All right. Okay, all right. Our, so we have a friendly amendment, which Ms. Halsted is agreeing to. Is there any other discussion? Okay, so what we are voting on, do I, I need to wait a minute? Amend the resolution?
Yeah, I was just.
So we're not going, we're not adopting that resolution. We are going with our friendly amendment amended resolution. Correct.
So we'll, we'll retype the, uh, the resolution and, uh,
Okay.
per the board's language.
Right, and the difference is going to be that the 3.45 million is requested to come from our capital reserve and that the 1.125 million is to come from county funds.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Everyone understand what they're voting for? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes 6-1. Dr. Chase is a no. Okay, going on to action item 8.04, award of a contract in the amount of 4.32 to Service Mechanical, Inc., for the upgrade of mechanical systems at Brookpoint High School using budgeted CSL FRF grant funds. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Um, comments, questions, or concerns? Uh, Ms. Sigmund?
I'm going to ask again because I thought I understood, but I don't. Why is this one on action and not consent? Okay, because you asked for it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so on top of that, um, and this is more for public, this kind of, I came in here a little annoyed with a lot of things here. So I, I don't know if Ms. Halsted and Ms. Guy remember, but around the time we were matriculating onto this board, Brookpoint High School's HVAC and temperature control systems was a huge bone of contention because I remember Ms. Egan sitting up here, Ms. Hollerbeck, or sitting up here saying, "We got to get this fixed before I go because I've been dealing with this for too long." And if she had already been dealing with it for too long and here we are halfway through our term and we're dealing with it, it's like making my head explode. But what makes me really, really angry is that this isn't even going to fix the project. And the fine print in this is that we don't have enough money, enough money to fix this project because it is beyond the scope of what we were originally approved for. And due to the inflation, I lost the part in here, due to inflation, um, and, uh, you know, all sorts of economic issues, we can't fix this problem until Au, like, it won't be done until August 2025 because we've got to phase it because we can't afford to fix it. A problem we knew about two years ago and even before that because of the way our 3R is funded, because of how we get estimates for things and, okay, funded or lack thereof, um, because things sit there for so long that by the time we get around to funding them, the people who gave us the estimate are probably retired and the costs have gone up so much that it's no longer a viable, um, cost. So early in my term here, I was like, okay, we'll approve these things. And I start reading these and I'm like, this isn't even the whole thing. And this is why we have a problem with our 3R list as well. We need to start funding entire jobs. And when we can't fund the entire job, we need to start talking about that because we just approved this thing and it says, oh, great, we've got $4 million, let's, we're going to fix Brookpoint. And then in July, when it's 107 degrees and they wonder why it's not working properly, it's because, well, we only did phase one. And that's only going to fix part of the issue. See it in July 2025 when we expect this repair to be substantially complete. It is December 2023 and we are now approving a project that's going to take us a year and a half because we don't have the money for a project that we knew we needed.
It's phase one of multi-phases.
I can't. But, you know, just like poor Mr. Fulmer, every time I ask, is this something that we could have used contingency reserve funds for? This is the type of thing I could, I, I intentionally will start pointing out because I'm tired of this just kind of being in the fine print and making it look like we're getting a job done and fulfilling people's needs when we are just doing the best we can with what we, what we are given and what we have. And it's not fair and it's not right, but we are really trying to do the best we can with what we have. But it is why, another indicator on why we need to change the way we are doing things. Uh, and we need to draw attention to that and speak about it and speak loudly about it because especially when they're, it's not their full-time job like it's ours. Across the street, they're like, well, we funded that. Well, you funded it at 2022 prices or 2002 prices, more like it, um, and we're having to make a 2023 repair. So I, of course, will support this motion because some HVAC repair is better than nothing, but I'm not going to do it happily or quietly. Thank you.
Dr. Chase?
So first, uh, I want to commend staff for applying for this grant and getting it. I think it's really important to acknowledge that this is being paid for with grant money. And I think it's important for people to understand that our staff do work very hard to find whatever way they can to take care of these things. Now, I wish the grant was for $20 million and it was fixing Drew's HVAC system rather than, uh, 4.3 million to do a partial fix of Brookpoint. My understanding from talking with Mr. Towery is it will be another 6 million to finish the project. So we're talking about 10.3 million. And yes, that is more than the 20 million it would have cost to fix Drew. But I do find it beyond frustrating, um, that we are in this situation. I will be supporting it, uh, for the 4 million. I don't know where I'll be for the 6 million because the 3 million in HVAC repair stuff that was supposed to do something for Drew went for tracks being repaired at various middle schools. So, um, again, commend you for finding money, um, that we don't have to go across the street and ask for and we don't have to ask the taxpayers of Stafford County to pay for. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Dr. Warner?
First of all, thank you for the grant. Whoever wrote the grant, whoever found the grant, whoever found this $4 million to do this project, I appreciate it because that seems to be about the only way we can get things funded. We have to, we have to write grants because we have no mechanism for funding our 3R projects. We have no mechanism for funding 3R projects. So we are going to put a Band-Aid on Brookpoint and hope that Band-Aid lasts long enough that we can replace the system. I will be supporting this, but I share Ms. Sigmund and Dr. Chase's frustration that this is not the way to fund major repairs. And we have 30, what, 35 schools and we have major repairs constantly. And half of our schools or more than half of our schools, I think two-thirds of our schools are over 30 years old. So this is aging infrastructure and, and we are, we're searching for grants to fund it because the county doesn't do it. We have no mechanism for funding 3R projects. It's been something I've been yelling about for four years. It's been something I've been yelling about for four years.
Thank you, Dr. Warner. Ms. Guy?
Yes. I'm about to have a panic attack up here, because it's just so heavy. I mean, what you just said is really negative. I just need some positive, bring back the students to sing, because this is stressful. I tried, I tried, I stopped playing the Lotto, right? Because I never win anything except my elections. It's the first time I ever won anything. And so I was playing the Lotto constantly, trying to win money for the schools, and I kept losing, but I'm gonna go back to like 10 a days now, because we need some type of funding. This is beyond frustrating. I do appreciate staff finding grants. Thank you, and find more, please. I remember this, I remember Ms. Hollerback speaking about this years and years ago. My kids, I've had four kids, five kids go through Brookpoint, so we've been there for a minute. I mean, this is great, but the water is still brown. So, like, we still have to fix things. It's horrible. I'm absolutely gonna support this. But I do think that we have to definitely get the community behind us. Maybe do more Listen and Learn, Dr. Taylor, or Put Me Out There or something. Tell Ms. Guy where to go, because it ain't working, and we need to do better.
I have a question. When you, with the award awarded by the school board on December 12th, is all of this 4.3 for the project that's to be completed by August 29th? Or is the other part of the project? So the other 6 million comes after August of 2025?
Yes.
Oh, hello. All right. Anybody else?
So, just, you know, of course, I'm gonna support this, because it's a grant, and it is what it is. But I do think it's important for us to each speak just to the fact and to the public. And I know these aren't like widely run, we're not like major social media influencers on YouTube. I noticed last time it was like 37 views, and that was pretty upsetting, but whatever, I don't expect it. Everybody's tuning in and running back to find the school board meeting. But I will say, for people really listening and really understanding, please understand, these are your taxpaying dollars that are not going back to you. We invest in our schools, because these kids are our future. And they should not, we should not have to nickel dime every project to invest in our future, to invest in kids to have a comfortable lifestyle while they're in school. And, I mean, clearly, our teachers and administrators as well. But it is super frustrating. We have been coming to the table over and over and over again for a meeting that keeps getting canceled over and over and over again to discuss these very issues, and I really wish we had a way to really impress upon everyone the urgency of that meeting taking place, and eye-to-eye contact to help them understand just what's happening in our schools and at the school level. Because you can't build a community around anything other than schools. That's just the way it's been for years. I didn't come here because it was the, what we used to call the exit to nowhere. I didn't come here because of that. I came here because the school rating was great. That's how you build a community, around the schools and the potential for the future, because that's where you find the hope.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven, nothing. Thank you, Mr. Towery. Okay, superintendent comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to piggyback a little bit on your very robust capital improvements and three R discussion, we're very close to a time when you will have to go across the street and ask for whole projects to be funded in the moment, because the need will be emergent. The need is already emergent, as you know, but the funding is dry. This issue, the one that you just voted on, definitely predates me, and I do have to give a lot of credit to the superintendents who came before me and the staff that was in place before, the folks that are incumbent in their roles right now, that this project has been ongoing for several years, and has been something that Mr. Fulmer in particular has had to work through with multiple superintendents, three as a matter of fact, on this just one issue. So as that landscape continues to get more and more complex, I wanna, I wanna thank the board for your steadfast advocacy. The board doesn't have to and doesn't agree on every issue, but I gotta tell you that having the board so passionately advocate for the needs of our students, our staff, and our community, to have adequate facilities and adequate resources is so meaningful. And I would like to thank you and thank our community for putting you in your seats to advocate for this important function, because it is important that our other decision-makers, whether they be in the state legislature or in our local government offices, understand the importance and how urgent these issues really are. To that end, I would like to thank our state legislators for attending our legislative summit last week that the board hosted, where we shared our legislative priorities with our state legislators. I wanna thank our state legislators, because several of them have already filed bills that this board recommended to them, and I wouldn't give them a huge shout-out, because sponsoring a bill is no small feat, and that within 12 hours of your legislative summit, bills were filed representing your interests and the interests of the school division, and that is a pretty special thing. And it's something new for this community, and the fact that our second legislative summit was such a huge success. Huge thanks to the staff at Stafford High, and some of the other folks that helped make that event very special. I would like to congratulate also this board in returning its members next year. We had an election, and we are very fortunate to have a returning roster come back in January, so very excited about that. And I would be remiss if I too did not echo my supreme thanks for our student representatives. What a special year you have made this for us in so many ways, and we hope that we have returned the favor and made it special for you. Your contribution to this school division will be one for the history books. We will see your picture in the hallway and look upon it fondly for many years as the first, and what will likely be a long line of really strong leadership from our student body, and we are just so grateful for you, and we thank you. This was no small thing, to step into something that was brand-new and did not exist before you. You set precedent at every single meeting that you attended, and you left really big shoes to fill, and we're really excited for what will happen next with you and for your replacements. And we're also very excited, as board members emeritus until you graduate, that you get to serve in your capacity through your graduation experience, as well as student representatives to the board. So thank you for that. You were spectacular. I do wanna wish everyone a very happy holiday season, and to remind everybody that we have put some resources in recent editions of Elevate Weekly to address some food insecurities. We had a presentation earlier this evening about Band Together Against Hunger, to Fight Hunger, and we certainly have some food insecurity issues in Stafford County, and we wanna make sure that people are connected to those resources, so please check out Elevate Weekly. We are also still fundraising with the fire department for our initiative to provide students in need with a coat. Our operation Warm is well underway. We have funded enough coats for our elementary students, but we know that there are secondary students in need as well. You can check out staffordschools.net/operationwarm for more details, or just Google Operation Warm in Stafford Schools to donate. We would really appreciate it. The families and staff at Stafford Schools are very much looking forward to a holiday break, and I think everybody here is too. So thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board. It has been a fantastic 2023.
Thank you very much, Dr. Taylor. Moving on to board member comments. Ms. Halsted?
Okay, so I am gonna start out with my special thanks to Maraki and Catherine, although I didn't tell her, the only thing I was gonna do for comments was hug her and cry. But then, Maraki, you'd have to come up here, and it would get awkward, but. So this has been fascinating for me to be a part of this experience with you girls and watching the initiative that you took. We were speaking outside. I've started positions before that were never in existence, and it's a huge burden. It's not knowing if it's the right path or the right track. It's falling and having to pivot and do all kinds of things, and you did all of it with grace, and you were so consistent in your outreach to the students for mental health. And it being such a huge issue, I really hope that you'll keep that torch, pass that on to our next representatives, but also carry it forward to wherever you go, and constantly keep that focus, and remember that you can make that difference anywhere you are. I know for me, you've made a huge impression on me, and just, you know, to see just the heart and soul of everything you put in. So I thank you for the service to this board, but also for changing my life in a way to see how passionate students really are and engaged. It just makes, makes the world a happier place. So thank you for that. I only have to say, and I know you're probably gonna get me on my shortest time ever, but join me tomorrow, I'll be at Rocky Run Elementary School from 6:00 to 7:30. I'll be doing a town hall there. We'll be discussing many things, but I'm not gonna be addressing CIP or growth or anything like that. That's for when all these other smart people are around. But, so please be there. I'll probably get there a little bit early, so if you wanted to talk to me a little bit earlier, outside, or whatever, but come with your questions, comments, and concerns. And if I may, just wish Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, whatever you celebrate, please be safe. Always remember that it's not the size of the present inside the box, it's the size of the heart behind the present. So I wish everyone the best. I wish our, oh, thank you. I wish our teachers a well, well, well-rested and well-deserved vacation time, and to our administrators and central office. Part of me wants to apologize, and the other part of me wants to say thank you as well.
Thank you, Ms. Halsted. Dr. Chase?
Yeah. I wanted to also thank the legislators who came to the legislative summit, Senators McPike and Durant, and to the two delegates, Mr. Cole and Delegate Milde. And I thought it was really interesting that the four delegates are from opposite sides of, the senators and delegates, so we had, half had been elected as Republicans, and half had been elected as Democrats. And it was really lovely to see that all of them agreed on the importance of education. And so, and I also wanna thank the staff at Central Office, but also at Stafford High School for putting on such a phenomenal event. And then I also wanted to thank Dr. Young for the tree lighting ceremony, and Ms. Bellino for pulling together various choruses to perform at that event. And it was really a lovely opportunity for the schools in the county to do something together. Ms. Guy was talking about wanting something positive to think about, and I think that that was an opportunity for a positive exchange. I enjoyed speaking with Dr. Young, Supervisor Bomke, and Supervisor Vanuch at that event. And so I really appreciated that opportunity, and I hope that we can work together more as we come through. And while I regret that we won't have an opportunity to meet soon, part of me is quite happy the week, last week of my exams, that I don't have to go to a meeting. So, and I certainly understand if they feel similarly, having meetings at the end of December is kind of a rough time for everybody. So I absolutely understand and look forward to meeting with them in the new year. And again, I'd also like to thank Catherine and Maraki for their service this past year. It's been lovely. You've set the bar high, and hopefully your successors will do at least half as well as you all have done. And thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Ms. Guy?
I first wanna start off by thanking our student reps, who are amazing. Sometimes you've made me feel like, gosh, I need to learn bigger words. And that's a good thing, you know? You challenge me and make me think more. But you're also just incredibly kind, warm young women, and I am so excited to see what you guys are gonna do. I don't know if you Snapchat or the TikToks or whatever, but I'm gonna find you, not in a stalky way, but like, I just wanna support you, and, you know, I just wanna follow you, and, because I know that you're gonna do something amazing, so, or maybe I'll just set like a Google alert, and it'll just tell me when you make the paper. But anyway, I think you guys are great, and I'm actually, I'm so excited as well for your successors. I know they're gonna be phenomenal as well, because Dr. Taylor, you pick pretty darn good, so that's one of your, well, not one, like, you know what I'm trying, the next point that I'm gonna make is, I too attended the tree lighting ceremony, and Chairwoman Young did a phenomenal job. I didn't go to it the other two years, I had plans, but I went on this time, and it was so positive, you're right. I loved it. I didn't get to see you guys, because I was hobbling around, but I had the best time. And it was, like, the VIP tent was so nice, and the cookies, and they treated you, it was really nice, except for they didn't wanna let me in for parking, but it doesn't matter. I had a great time, and so I wanna thank, like I said, Chairwoman Young and Ms. Bellino for making that just fantastic. The staff at Stafford High School and the students, who were amazing. That legislative summit, for me, it was like date night with myself, because I didn't have a date, but they, someone met me in, you know, suit and tie, and he was so handsome, and he escorted me to, you know, where I had to go, and it just, I felt like a real important person, so thank you. The food was amazing, those kids, I mean, we should really start monetizing, right? Like, those kids were so, the food was phenomenal, so I was highly impressed. And I did love the mix that we have for who's representing Stafford, and it seemed like they all were, like, they were buying into everything, you know, at the key points where you need them to buy in, and it was all of them, not just the Dems, not just the Republicans, but they all did. So that gives me a little bit of hope, because I desperately need hope right now in my life. And I hope everyone has happy holidays. I was at a meeting today at Hampton Oaks, and I was telling the educators, like, go home after school's closed and just don't get out of bed. Like, I just want everyone to have the best holiday and recharge, and then come back in January and have the energy that you had in August, because we gotta get through the second half of the year. And if you're a praying person out there, pray for peace in our community and in the world, because we need it, and pray that everyone feels the love that everyone deserves to feel, because not everyone does. And I love what you said about the gifts, it's about what's in the heart, because the gifts I gave you guys suck. So, I'm just telling you that. But, no, they weren't good. They weren't great. I didn't do my best, but I love you guys, and I'm gonna do better next year, okay?
Okay, I just wanna point out that-
Dr. Warner?
On that note, so first of all, I do wanna thank Stafford High School for hosting the legislative summit. I think it did go really well. It is always a good opportunity for us to meet face-to-face with our legislators and advocate for the things that we know the school needs. We sit on the school board, where we have 100% accountability for the outcomes, and we have zero control over the funding. So we rely on the state and local governments in order to do that. I do have to say that our culinary students, under the leadership of Chef Raven, probably helped our cause considerably by serving some of the best food. It was delicious. And I think that it's telling how well it went to know that Senator McPike and others have already introduced legislation that we asked for. I would like to, again, offer Catherine and Maraki the best of luck. They really set, they came into this role, and they took it as their own, and they decided what they were gonna do with it, and I think they've done an outstanding job. I just wanna remind them, don't be afraid to take risks, and don't be afraid to be heard. Make sure that you raise your voice when you need to. I think you guys will do really well, and I'm really proud that you joined our board this year. Thank you. I'd like to remind people that they can still apply to some of our advisory committees. We also have added a new one for military families, and I think it's really important, given that all of our schools are now Purple Heart, Purple Star designation. So we have a tremendous population of students who belong to military families, and this is a real opportunity to help make sure that we're meeting the needs of those military families. But all of our committees are open applications, please consider joining. This is a great way to use some of your skills and talents and help the schools. I would like to wish everybody a happy holiday. I hope you enjoy your break, and I know everybody's looking forward to it, and it's well-earned and deserved, and I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday. and deserved and I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warner. Ms. Sigman?
Thank you. First, a housekeeping item, I wanna remind the residents of Emory Mill that there's a redistricting meeting on Monday, the eighteenth, at six PM at Colonial Forge. If you have any questions in advance of that meeting or you can't make it, please reach out and I'm happy to fill you in and get your questions answered. Second, following on with what Ms. Guy said, I was thrilled that all the legislators came to our legislative session. It was a fantastic conversation, but I'm even more thrilled that our student culinary, our culinary students were there, because it was next, it was next level stuff. I couldn't believe what they were turning out. I do agree, we need to monetize that. You know, we talk about having the largest restaurant chain in Stafford County, but I think we need one with white tablecloths and, you know, fancy music and can help to add a line item of income on our budget sheet. That would be great for our community. But I also kind of wanted to, Dr. Warner kind of said some things that were on my mind as well, is that we are elected by our constituents to really improve our schools and make sure our students have what they need in, as I like to say, the people, place, and things to make our education system great. Having quality teachers and safe and accessible and well-equipped learning environments, but we don't have control of where our money comes from. We can do the best we can, when we can fine grant money, we might have a little bit of control on that, but we do have to partner with our Board of Supervisors for that money. Now, each of us are also electing those Board of Supervisors to do that job, to maintain the remainder of our county, whether it's the libraries, the public safety, the roads, and the schools. And they will be the first to tell everyone that the schools are the largest portion of the money that they have to allocate. What they don't tell you is that even though we are the largest part of the money they have to allocate, they spend the least amount of time in our schools and with the people running our schools. So, they are not making decisions based on any research, knowledge, or experience. We have had a, a teacher on our Board of Supervisors, that person has had a level of experience that they bring to the table, that's great. We now have an actual parent on our Board of Supervisors, they bring a level of experience that is also great. But they are not the people who are sitting down every day, visiting the schools, visiting their constituents, talking to the parents, sitting down with our team to go over budgets and spreadsheets that, no joke, I think next year we should all get each other magnifying glasses for Christmas. Maybe we can get them branded? I don't know. Because our spreadsheets are so small, because they are so detailed, line by line, of what we need and how to get there, but those conversations don't happen. Our counterparts, some of us have better relationships with our counterparts than others, some of us have great meetings with one other Board of Supervisor member, or maybe even two. But it takes four to pass a resolution and there isn't a majority on the Board of Supervisors that are willing to take the time to sit down with any of us, whether it's their counterpart or not, on this dais, or even with the people in the building who are even, the ones teaching us the same information. It's been set up here that we've been trying to have a CIP discussion that has been postponed multiple times, now will not take place till January. This is a problem for us. You know, we are on a timeline, the state budget's on a timeline, they're on a timeline. We have to get them this information by specific dates. Some dates, you know, are dictated by the state constitution. Those dates don't change, because they don't have the interest or the inclination to have these conversations. It says something, that it is the largest portion of our budget and it has the fewest conversations on that side of the street. It needs to be the other way around. We are not an afterthought, we are a significant investment. People talk about, why don't we get, what is it, Harris Teeter? Why aren't we getting a Trader Joe's? Why aren't we getting, you know, big business like the Lockheed Martins or other corporate entities coming here? Schools are part of that marketing plan. Why do the big companies go to Loudoun County? Because Loudoun County can get employees to move there, to work for their buildings, because the schools are great. We are not a liability. We could be their biggest asset in recruiting businesses to this community, we could be their biggest ally in making this a better place to live, work, and learn, but we are instead considered an albatross and a burden to the budget that gets in the way of doing things that they want to do or their special, or what they consider their special projects. And that's not fair. 'Cause I think it is Dr. Taylor that says we're twenty, our children are twenty percent of the community, but a hundred percent of our future. And if we don't have spaces for them to live, work, and learn, then what, what are we doing here? Where do we want these children to go? Because they're not gonna stay here, 'cause there's not gonna be a place that they can live, there's not gonna be a place for them to work, and they're going to be contributing to other communities and not to ours. Thank you.
Ms. Healy?
Okay, listen, Ms. Guy, I'm gonna be on the positive side. First, I wanna thank Muraki and Catherine. You all have been amazing and I, I will never forget you. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty neat that you could just come in, have this impact, and literally make us a better board. And you have set the bar really high and I have no doubt that your successors will learn from you. I'm really glad you're gonna be around to, to, to help them through the next couple months. But this is something that you, you really should be proud of yourselves for, in addition to getting through your second half of your junior year and first half of your senior year. I mean, you, you took this on in addition to everything else, so thank you. Thank you so much. You've done so, so much for us. And I, I consider you a team. You know, we may have a representative and an alternate, but to me, you are our student reps. You know, you, you really have been fantastic, so thank you. Next, I wanted to also thank Brookpoint. How did they do? Do you know Dr. Taylor on their, their little test or exams the next day? The culinary arts people were, were being-
Oh, that's Stafford High.
Oh, I'm sorry.
At Stafford High.
I'm thinking of Brookpoint, 'cause that's where we were last time-
During, during their adjudication, they did well.
I'm, I'm sure they, I'm sure they did, but, oh my gosh, that was absolutely amazing food. That was better food than I've gotten in a lot of restaurants. So, they, they really should be proud and, and their chef deserves a lot of kudos as well, 'cause it's, it's, it's a lot more than just cooking the food and serving it. It's the whole, the whole big picture. But, and, and I know that our other, our other schools with culinary programs are just as talented. So, I was thinking of Brookpoint, 'cause last time we had a, a meeting with the supervisors with the sit-down, we had our, our student chefs there, so that was, that was fantastic as well. I tried to go to the tree lighting and I actually was at the county last Friday afternoon and I saw Dr. Young and Mr. Rossberg in the parking lot and Mr. Rossberg said, "Oh, you don't have to come too early, 'cause, you know, the tree lighting's gonna be at seven forty-five." And I said, "Oh, that's great." So, I head down to get there around seven and I got turned away from the, you know, I couldn't even come down Courthouse Road. The, the deputy said, I said, "I have this pass," because Mr. Rossberg gave me this really official-looking VIP pass. I mean, it said Stafford County and it very, you know, hanging on your car and he goes, "It doesn't matter, you got a pass, there's no parking." I'm like, "Oh, no." So, my, my choice was to make a, make a U-turn with fifty other cars, go to the commuter lot, which looked like it was about full already before seven, get on this school bus and then I probably would've missed the, the lighting anyway. So, next year, I'm gonna go early. But, you know, Dr. Young said she has, she has bags for those of us that weren't there, she's got little gift bags for us that she's going to, to hand out for, so we, so we all get one, whether we were there or not. But I heard it was a wonderful event and give a lot of credit to Dr. Young, 'cause I think she put a lot of, of her energy and personality into that, to make it a truly amazing community event. I wanna thank Dr. Taylor for what you've done for the legislative summit. I mean, you say our bills, I mean, we, yes, we agree with them and we support them, but we didn't write those resolutions. We didn't print those little brochures up, you know, so thank you for putting that together, you know, well in advance, so that those bills could be put in. Not only giving it to them that night, but giving it to them early, so that they did have the time to go through them and do what they needed to do. So, thank you for, for, for helping put Stafford on the, on the map. And I, I, I agree, I think we have a very good team of legislatures there. I don't think they're gonna be looking party lines where education's concerned. I think they all value education, so hopefully there'll be some extra funding coming in from the, the state in that regard. I wanna wish everyone a happy holiday. We all want a break, we deserve a break, and hopefully, as you say, we'll come back refreshed and ready to hit the ground on that second, second half, which always flies by, you know, of, of the year. And we'll look forward to seeing our current student reps until December thirty-first on the stage with the school board, right, Dr. Taylor? That's the emeritus title gets you a special seat on the school board, you know, for, for graduation. And then my, my, my final comment is to thank Mrs. Randall. This has been a, I know, I don't wanna embarrass you, but it's been, it's been a long year and you have done an amazing job, so-
Thank you.
Thank you. I know you've really tried hard to keep us all on track, to keep us together, to make sure all, every voice is heard, and it's not easy. You've, you've really done a remarkable job, so. And, and not to mention all these healthy things that you feed us and bring us and trying to, trying to make us-
Blueberries.
Yeah, blueberries and-
Some boccastric.
What's, what's the little Epsom salts and stuff like that? But thank you so much. It's, it's been such a pleasure to, to work with you. And I, I should say something about Mrs. Mancini as well. I used to be Trish before Mrs. Mancini came on the board and she wanted to be Trish, so that's when I became Trisha. So, but, but that's when we all used first names. We, none of this misses and doctors and all those titles and we were just, you know, plain old people. But Mrs. Mancini was, she was a character, she was amazing. And she really did, she really did care about the kids and, and the music was her passion and, and it's, it's so nice that we could do that little, you know, tribute to her this evening. And for, for me, not only for Mr. Mancini's benefit and, and Trisha's, it, it really helps set a good tone for, for our meeting tonight. And that's what we're about. When we, when we see these students and the performances, that's what we need to think of when we're thinking about the schools, because that's who we're here for. And these are, these are the young, you know, ladies and gentlemen that are, that are gonna be moving on. So, that, that was, that was really great to, to have them here, so thank you. And I, I would say, you know, we should challenge ourselves to improve our relationships with the Board of Supervisors. And if we have one that we don't particularly relate to, pick another one or two. I had this discussion with Mrs. Sigman before you, you know, trades are open, but, you know, it's, it's, it's one thing to say, "Oh, they don't listen to us," or "They're not giving us money," or "They don't care." But it's our job to be the advocates. We have to sell our needs. And that's, that's part of what we do. I mean, we're, you know, like it or not, we're elected, but to represent, you know, our, our constituents. And we can't do it on our own, so, you know, rather than just write them off, because they may be negative, we need to try to channel that negativity and, and be more positive. So, that, that, that's my advice. I mean, sometimes, I mean, it is a challenge, but I think we're all up to it. And that's, that's what I suggest we all think about over the break, you know? How can we make it better? And how can we sell ourselves and sell, sell the needs of the schools? And, and maybe they don't come to school, but maybe we need to get them into school. You know, we have legislatures, bring your legislator to lunch, you know, months or bring them to school. Maybe we need to be bringing the supervisors to school, at least those who will, will come, you know, as well. So, that's enough for me. Thank you. Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. I would also like to say, I was so super proud of the work that our representatives did this year on our board and for our board. Bringing the student voice, bringing your ideas, and even the questions sometimes you would ask in our meetings was so helpful, because sometimes we're in our own cloud and space and you ask a question and we're like, "Oh, yeah." I mean, 'cause other people are listening or watching and they're not under, maybe not understanding and tuning out, but you get very, very good about stopping us and reminding us to answer a question that is very important. And so, I appreciate those kinds of things that you've done for us this year. But at BSBA, we were invited as a board to bring our student voices, student rep voices. Dr. Taylor put together a great presentation. Ms. Healy, poor thing, it was supposed to be like a two-hour drive, it was four, because they shut down ninety-five. And she still made it, we were so happy she got there. But to listen to our girls, the, Catherine, Rocky was hot, way over her head with the whole work and school stuff going on right now, but we had our two new girls there and they did such an amazing presentation. The people in the audience kept coming up to them, asking them questions. It was so nice for Catherine, not only to share about some of the glows that she's had and that they've had as representatives, but also the grows, which was nice, because it was very honest, you know, what things went well, what things did not, so that other school divisions could consider, you know, and even other reps can consider. I know they really enjoyed talking to representatives from all over the state and that was really exciting for them. And just like I said, Stafford County is so proud for the work that you guys have done this year for us. I would also like to, I went to Dixon Smith Middle School this Saturday for their Model UN. I'd like to thank Lisa Arthur, she's one of the focus teachers that helped put that together. There were two hundred kids there and, and it was an outstanding array of students that were involved and from all over the county, sitting together, chatting, going, dressing so professionally, going into the rooms, listening, learning, discussing with diplomacy, a fine example of what we would want our students to come out, to make them better people and perform better in service. It's maybe in some point in the political career even, but they just did an outstanding job. And then I flew over to Ferry Farm for the pancake breakfast, which of course makes me, with the super singers and the Santa and the pancakes and the plate auctions and they got these one-dollar ceramic plates and they were all painted up and they put them up for auction and you get the one-dollar plate going for five dollars fifteen. No, one went for seven hundred and fifty dollars. Yes, I said that, seven hundred and fifty dollars for a one-dollar plate. And it was for a child that just really wanted it, really needed it, and everybody kind of wanted that for her. It was just amazing, amazing. And I would like to thank Tom Cohen for always being my, my counterpart on the Board of Supervisors. Anytime I pinched, pulled, yelled, or cajoled him, he came along with anything that I asked him to do. And so, I figured, "Well, I've got a new counterpart now, I'm gonna have to break him in." So, I, he and I met, Dante Diggs and I have met and had our own little conversation. He has rumored around till it got back to me that he's gonna be my new BFF. So, I brought him to Model UN and I brought him to the pancake breakfast and he loves Stitch. I'm gonna tell all his secrets. No, I'm kidding. He loves Stitch and he won himself a, or he bid on a Stitch plate and won it. He was very proud of himself. Yeah. And so, but I've asked him, "How many things can I invite you to?" He said, "All of them." So, I am jumping in with both feet and taking my new BFF into the schools and to these events. And I'm super excited to have him come along, just as Mr. Cohen did as well. I'm, I'm so glad for our families that have been coming out to learn about all of our new high school programs. Gosh, every school has been hosting and, and showing and showcasing and it's, it's been a lot of work on staff and the schools and I just really appreciate the excitement that is going forward with that. I hope you can find one that you're interested in, but frankly, if you don't, you know, going to school to, and choosing your classes in your way- to school to, and choosing your classes in your way is just fine too. I did enjoy the legislative summit. I was happy to have our senators and our delegates in participation, but it really is helpful when we don't have someone who goes down to Richmond and advocates for Stafford schools. So we took our legis, brought our legislators into the schools, appreciate Mountain View's musical performance, appreciate the student escorts, so professionally dressed and as well as the culinary arts under Chef Raven, great presentation, delicious foods. I would also like to thank Dr. Taylor though, the preparedness that you took in making sure not only was everything well described, questions answered, but it was like a dot-to-dot for them. They could just tear out the page and hit submit and they were ready to go and in support of Stafford schools. And, you know, I can't say that that happens in the student government or the Stafford government side or in any other school district, so I really appreciate us being the size that we are to produce something like that and get results as quick as we did is, we're very lucky to have you, so thank you. Also, I would like to wish everyone a happy holidays. I hope you find warmth and peace in your home or who you are with or not with or what you decide to do or not do. I'm excited about our upcoming year. When you see us in January, I will not be in this seat. Our first meeting is an organizational meeting where we get to decide new people in the chair and the vice chair seat. Not me. And we will also have prior to that meeting, a FOIA training for our board's advisory committee members. So we look forward to those that, like Dr. Warner suggested, that there is still opportunity in time for you to sign up for some of our advisories and we get to meet you and you get to see which board member has signed up for which committee because we did a little shifting around. So you'll get to see who has signed up for what committees and we're excited to have you come and work because frankly, we've gotten a lot of recommendations, both some that have come with a finance piece to them and then others are just changes and suggestions that absolutely make sense. So we really appreciate the heart, the work of our advisories as well as the staff members that help to guide them and the board members that get to serve in the room with them as well. So happy holidays, everyone. We'll see you in January.